Well, good evening and welcome to the City of Bristol, Virginia City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. We're going to start out with a moment of silent prayer. Please join me in saying for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's great to see a large crowd here tonight. I know that we have a packed agenda, so I'm excited to jump into it. I will ask if there's any comments that would like to be made by council?
Yes, thank you. I do have one thing I'd like to discuss briefly, and that is that March is National Kidney Awareness Month, Kidney Disease Awareness Month. And, you know, there are hundreds of thousands of people that suffer with various forms of kidney disease in their life. As a diabetic, I know I'm at a higher risk for it, so it's something I have to keep an eye on. My mother is in stage four kidney failure, so it's something that's, you know, close to home for me. So, you know, just take this sometime this month to worry about your kidney health, talk to your doctor about it, you know, drink plenty of water, stay hydrated, and make sure your kidneys are in good shape.
All right, I'd just like to say congrats to our boys and girls basketball teams. They've been a, they had a fantastic season, both, both sides didn't quite make it to state this year, but they, they worked really hard and did a great job in the regional championships. And then also the baseball and soccer seasons are about to begin, so I'm excited to see a few games and get into the Bearcat spirit again.
All right, thank you. Moving into city manager comments.
No comments tonight.
All right, thank you. All right, looking for a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Knave.
Yes. Okay, first item on the agenda, regular agenda tonight, is the president, presentation of the school board budget. And so I'd like to ask Dr. Scott if he would like to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Knave, and members of the council, and good evening, members of the city manager's office. David Scott, Superintendent for Bristol, Virginia Public Schools, and I'll be presenting our school budget. Whenever we start to engage stakeholders in our budget development process, I believe it's important that we take time to read through our vision statement, which is preparing all students to thrive in a dynamically challenged, changing world. And that's something that you will see at the bottom of each of our slides as we go through tonight. As we consider what it means to prepare students for a dynamically changing world that aligns with our budget priorities and keeps us on target for that vision. So, we have six budget priorities, and these are not in rank order, but they all kind of depend on each other and lean on each other. So, I'll go through these very quickly. The first thing when we think about the strength of our school system is knowing that our strength comes from having excellent instructors in the classroom. And we want to make every effort we can that is fiscally responsible to make sure that our compensation ranges are setting the pace for the rest of the region and that we stay at the head of that pack. With the budget that you will see this evening, I believe that we're going to be well positioned to do that. List number two up there is using the all-in funding to continue to implement the professional development that goes along with the Virginia Literacy Act. And this is money that came to us last year from VDOE through the governor's funding there. So, we still have money in that grant, and that is going towards making sure that our teachers have absolutely first-rate professional development for that, that new law. Number three, adequate funding for science and math proficiencies and providing hands-on learning. We acknowledge that our science and math scores have not kept pace with other scores in our school division. And in an effort to address that, we're leaning on best practices and research-based practices to make sure that that learning is more hands-on and more experiential for math and science. With number four, get the, strategizing the funding to keep attendance clerks and additional attendance officers in place. These positions started and were primarily funded through grants, but we, we know that we, along with most of the school divisions in the Commonwealth, continue to battle high attendance of chronic absenteeism. And so we want to make sure that we are showing that as a priority in our budget to make sure that they come into the local funding side and we can sustain the success that they're seeing in those positions. Last year was a big hiring season for us, and so one of the things that we did in recognition of that was to staff some people in, in the current school year. We want to continue this into next year to make sure that we have a proper onboarding and mentoring program in place. And we really believe that every time that we make a new hire, it's an investment in not only our future, but the future of that educator. And so we want to make sure that they're getting all the proper support they can through a comprehensive induction model. And last on our list here is capital improvements. We know that the city has entrusted us with, with four outstanding school buildings and some of them newer than others, but we want to make sure that they all remain in tip-top shape and that when we have opportunities to address capital needs, we do that in a way that not only addresses the aesthetics of the school, but also enhances the security of the school. So, to get into the fund numbers stuff, I should mention that this evening, our budget presentation is based on the conference committee budget, not the governor's proposed budget. So, hopefully, at, in a little bit more than a week's time, this will be signed into law, and we won't see any other changes coming from the governor as that gets signed. With required local effort, the conference budget has that at $9.1 million for, for the city for the con, minimum contribution. And that does not add in the, the debt service there. And we'll discuss that in a later slide. So, as promised, here's the later slide. So, the minimum contribution is $9.1 million, and when we add in that debt service of another $322,500, that brings the adjusted minimum contribution to $9.4 million. We are not asking for anything above the required local effort. And the footnote there, this is subject to change with the final state budget, but again, we're not anticipating any changes at the last minute. So, as we look at some of the other funds, in addition to the state and local funds that, that come into our budget, our school nutrition fund, if you look at the anticipated beginning balance and the anticipated ending, you see that that is going to be a balanced budget. The proposed revenue and expenditures are based on participation rates in the national school lunch programs. Textbook funds, we are going to be purchasing, we have a math textbook adoption coming up and some school devices, so we will end up a little bit lower than where we started, but, but still with over $500,000 in that account. The school construction fund, as Mrs. Jones, my CFO, and Mrs. Bradlin have, have discussed, with the principal payment on the, on the new building, that will take that school construction fund down to about $738,000 this year. Local capital projects, while we don't have any specifically earmarked yet, we do want to show that there's a $2,000 increase there for capital projects, and if unused, that will go back into that local fund. On that note, we have contracted with Thompson and Litton for a comprehensive building study to help us outline and identify capital projects that, that might need to be addressed in the next five years. And then with the school activity funds, these are, you know, the money that the schools use, that is not necessarily the, the big money that comes down directly from the school division, but sort of in-house school money. We can see there, again, another even budget or balanced budget, rather. We've covered that. I'm going the wrong way. That's what's happening. Okay, so with the increases in the budget that we're looking at, these are the things that we are expecting to accomplish this year. As far as salaries go, the, the governor's introduced budget had language in it that would have, in the first year of the biennium budget, provided a 3% increase for all SOQ positions and another 3% in the second year of the biennium. We exceeded that in the first year and would have been on the hook for a 1.5% increase in the second year of the biennium budget. We're going to exceed that and be able to give a, a step increase on all step scales and then a 3% increase on top of that. And we, we like to point out that that is always derived from the midpoint of each scale so that we don't have employees at the top end of the scale enjoying a greater percentage increase or cash value increase there. So, that is, I, I think, very, that is done in a very fair way throughout our scales. We also know that with the cost of healthcare increasing throughout the nation, that we, we had to budget for an increase there. And one of the things that we are doing to offset that increase to some degree is to get a little bit deeper into the cost sharing aspects of that. So, whereas in the past, we have paid 99% of a single subscriber's premiums, we are now looking at a balance that will be closer to 95 and 5% shares. We have two additional school bus purchases, and this puts us closer to a, a replacement cycle for our buses than, than we've ever been before. So, we're in pretty good shape right now with the bus fleet. Biggest problem, however, is the lead time on those. So, buses that we purchased at the end of last year, we're still waiting for them to arrive. So, we want to make sure that we secure those when we can. As we look around our schools and are very proud of our schools, we want to make sure, as I said earlier, that we stay on top of them, the maintenance and the care of those schools. So, in our new budget, we are going to be adding a position for our maintenance department and one, our custodial department. And we're also adding one more bus driver. This would have us staffed at, there's, I think this is probably the best way I can state this, but if the number of routes that we have on a daily basis is X, this will put us at X plus one so that we always have a driver ready to go in the event of an absence. And that seems to be far worse, I'm sure, with, with everybody, absenteeism is worse on Fridays. We don't want to start a Friday with a call to say that the school bus won't be running. And we're also going to be adding a secretarial position at our middle school. One of the other things that we have done is to modify a program director salary scale, and we've added a supervisor scale. So, some of the employees that had the most responsibility on them were paid on an hourly scale that was not overtime exempt. So, this is going to rectify that, that situation. Okay, the revenue picture looks like this, that in state revenue, than in general revenue, we're looking at a, just over a $1 million increase. The restricted revenue or the state grants is pretty much the same, about $143,000 increase. We do have a, show a decrease in federal revenue, and that is with the expiration of SR3 funds, unfinished learning and so forth. So, some of those grants that have, have just run their course are coming out of there. Local revenue, again, this is the increase in the, the city contribution shown there. And then other revenue, slight decrease, and that's, I have it in my note, but probably not really important, it's $34,000. So, how the money will be spent, we have a pie chart on the next slide that shows this in, I think, a little bit more visually appealing sense. But you can see the preponderance of the money is spent on instruction, and that's how it, it should always be. Our operational costs are increasing slightly, but to a much greater degree, the instructional costs are increasing. And here you can kind of see what that looks like in, in terms of percentages. I think this is the, the balance that you want to see from every school division, is to see that most of the money is being spent on instruction. And a number that doesn't appear on that, but I think is worth noting, is that in total, 73% of our expenditures are related to salaries and compensation and benefits. So, there's not a lot of, a lot of overhead in, in what we're doing there. That concludes our presentation, and I'd be happy to field any questions from city council.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. We appreciate your presentation tonight. I'll just say, I think that in this budget, you've been very conservative with your approach and with us. And this is an area that I, I don't ever like to try to run slim on because it's important. Our investment in our children and our schools is extremely important. I feel like one of the things you have in there with the staff step increases is super important because we want to be able to be, retain the teachers that we have. We have wonderful teachers, some of the best in the state. To retain those, we're going to have to, to put those incentives and have those out there in order to be competitive, even with our neighbors. And so, because I know I've watched other presentations and from other school systems and know that there's others in the area that do those increases, and so that is important. I think also, when you're talking about equipment, as far as like the school bus purchases, asking for two additional school bus, buses, it's important that we keep. asking for two additional school buses, it's important that we keep that fleet turning over because you don't want to come up in 10 years and need, you know, 10 or 15 school buses.
Right, absolutely.
And I could go on and on about the other things, but those are the top two things that stood out to me. And I just wanted to thank you for being conservative and really coming with what I feel like are the bare necessities for the school and I appreciate your presentation tonight. I'll open the floor for any other questions.
Well, Dr. Scott, thank you for your presentation, obviously. A couple of things I want to highlight, then I have a couple of questions. So I do appreciate that you're adding those support positions, custodian, maintenance, because that's very important and that makes a school system and a school specifically run much more smoothly. I also appreciated your stated goal to focus on the math and science aspect, because I know, I believe there was a study, I think it was in a EP that said that Virginia was at the very bottom of the country because of math learning loss coming out of COVID. So, you know, I know the problem is not unique to us, but it's definitely something we have to address and I'm glad you're addressing it. My question is on the capital improvement plans. So, you know, obviously, one of the reasons, one of the many reasons that we had to build a school was because three school buildings were in very bad shape and it was going to cost much more to fix them than it would be just to replace it. So when will, I know you said you've contracted with Thompson and Litten, when do you anticipate a report from them and what do you see, just if you had to guess, as kind of the big capital projects that you might have to do over the next few years?
Sure. With our contract with them, we're already inside the 100-day mark from when we should see reporting back from them. And some of the things that we know are that, with buildings that, the high school, for instance, that had construction at various different times over the past several decades, there are going to be some places where there might be water infiltration, foundations that are proving to need to be addressed. So some things like that, that aren't necessarily cosmetic, but that are more structural. We also know with the way that the nationwide discussion is around security and crisis preparedness, some of what we want to do is to address door locks and to make sure that we are outfitting our doors with the hardware that is the safest for our students and our staff. So that's a big focus of that. We also are going into our third year of extensive renovations at Virginia Primary School, where we have taken that somewhat open classroom concept and we have created walls where there hadn't been walls before. So continuing to do those, make sure that there's individual HVAC controls for those places and that we have comfortable classroom settings is going to be a priority for us.
I appreciate the work you all are doing. That's, you know, it costs a lot less in the long run to fix stuff before it's a big problem, so I appreciate that you all are doing that. And as a former student at Van Pelt, I appreciate that you're closing those classrooms in because they would get very loud when you're a little kid.
They do.
Trying to learn and you hear three other classes all around you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I similarly appreciate the staying on top of maintenance, as one could argue that we could have kept three of our schools if the funding necessary for maintenance and staying on top of them and periodic capital improvements had been handled. That was before your time, so it's not the blame of anyone currently involved. But now you're trying to do that and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I also appreciate that you're trying to make the, do the best you can with the least that you can get away with as far as making the best possible use of your resources. And it's obvious that you appreciate the financial situation the city finds itself in with your request and I greatly appreciate that as well.
Thank you, sir.
Just a quick question, since we were talking about school buses. Just out of curiosity, what does a school bus cost and how often do you have to replace a school bus, just roughly?
Roughly, school buses are in the range of $140,000 these days.
Okay.
And back before the economy really turned down in 2010, they, the state would tell us that school buses need to be retired after about 12 to 13 years. Now that they're not funding them as much, they say that they're good for 16 to 18 years. But we try to look at the mileage and make sure that as things age out, that we're replacing them with something more serviceable.
Okay.
Dr. Scott, thank you for being here. Thank you for the work you've done. We appreciate having you here in the city. Thank you for this budget. I know, I don't want to rehash what everybody said, it's, we appreciate the understanding you bring when you come here today. With the work that has happened the last couple of years, we're hoping we're turning that corner, we can do a little more in the future, we can find more things to do. Our educational system is very important. It's one of the basic building blocks of a locality's responsibility. We want to do it right and you are doing it right, but we just want to help you out as best we can going forward. So hopefully in future years, we can do more, but we appreciate what you've brought to us today.
Thank you very much. And before I step away from the podium, I want to thank Mrs. Tammy Jones for all of her hard work on the budget and would also like to thank Mr. Eads' office for being great partners with us.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much and yes, thank you so much, Ms. Jones. I know you and Ms. Bradlin work closely together and that's really nice that you can have conversations and work together and I love that. So thank you all for your hard work. We appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving into item number two, presentations of non-mandated outside agencies. Just a reminder, before we get started, you have 10 minutes each to present and tonight we have six. So we're going to go ahead and get started with the Southwest Virginia EMS Council and I believe we have Mr. Bowling and Mr. Woods here tonight. Welcome.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, city administration, thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to talk with you. We want to thank you for your funding last year and we've asked for an equal amount this year of $5,000. And we're going to talk about some of the things that we do. The overarching mission and vision of our organization is to understand the needs of the EMS community and to implement programs that reduce death and disability that arise from emergencies, both from medical and trauma emergencies, and to elevate the quality of pre-hospital care through all the many services that we offer. We do that in a number of ways. And have been doing that since 1979, so we're moving into our 46th year of service to EMS stakeholders. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, so we maximize public funding through programs that are available to us. And a majority of our funding comes through our contract with the Virginia Department of Health as a regionally designated emergency medical services council. And as a regional entity, we do support 13 counties and three cities throughout Southwest Virginia and that equates to about 80 licensed emergency medical services agencies and 1,500 providers spread across our service area. Our services that support emergency medical services fall into these broad areas that you see here, regional infrastructure, providing support to enable our local heroes to do their job. We provide regional medical direction in the form of creating medical protocols and destination plans to ensure that pre-hospital patients receive the appropriate treatment and are taken to the appropriate facility to ensure the best possible outcome. We're also the lead agency for regional planning and regional coordination of the EMS system and we play a very broad role in EMS provider education and continuing education in Southwest Virginia. Among our educational offerings, we are one of the region's only accredited EMS training certification programs at both the BLS, Basic Life Support, and ALS, Advanced Life Support Levels. And we have completed 250 to 300 students through our EMT courses that are directly supporting EMS agencies, including here in the city of Bristol. And of course, as a city of Bristol agency, those are being conducted right here in the city of Bristol. And then we've had advanced student completions of 100 to 150. We are currently completing an EMT advanced program that allows for advanced pharmacological interventions as well as other diagnostic techniques that are used by those providers. And so we're finishing that course right now. And then we focus also on community education, so we are an American Heart Association Community Training Center. And so over the last year, we've taught through our network of instructors that are about 140 basic level instructors and well over 120 advanced instructors, taught more than 900 emergency cardiovascular care courses, offered more than 246 advanced cardiac care courses. And that equates to about 5,000 certification cards. Those are individuals who have a credential that shows that they are equipped to assist with cardiac emergencies, both as labor responders and as practitioners in the field. So our community training center not only focuses on EMS agencies, but we support local colleges, hospitals, doctors' offices, nursing homes, daycares, and anyone who has a desire to become a labor rescuer, we offer those courses in our office on a continuing basis. And then we provide some other services that are aimed at supporting our region's first responders. One of those is our Critical Incident Stress Management Team. So we are a 24/7, 365 day a year team that is able to be requested to support in any critical incident to provide mental health services for EMS responders. That is offered free of charge and we do have pathways for continued care for individuals who are experiencing post-traumatic trauma as a result of their service. We also operate as a field print, fingerprinting site that supports both EMS agencies, but many other employers here in Bristol as well. We provide grant writing assistance to EMS agencies. Every year, there are two cycles of the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund that provides support for needed equipment to EMS agencies and we assist with that. And we support other regional educators and training programs. Right now, we have about $20,000 of equipment that is permanently on loan to the Southwest Virginia Paramedic Program to support their training efforts. And then we do lots of other programs that are needed and at request. So that's an overview of all the things that we do. We are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you so much. What an excellent presentation and we appreciate all the work that you all do in our community and surrounding communities and from the training that you do to all the other services. And I think from year to year, I hear this and then I forget all the many things that you offer along with the training. So thank you so much for what you do for our community.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
I'll open it up for any other questions or comments.
I'll just say, that's quite a list there. That's pretty impressive. So thank you for offering all those programs and trainings and doing it here in the city too. We can say that selfishly, I think. And for what you're asking, I think that's a pretty good bang for our buck, so I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Yeah, we do appreciate everything you all do. I know that you are kind of a new organization for us to begin funding and I think, not only is it good for us to fund it, it's also good for the informational awareness for people to know that this is here in our city. And I think it's a testament to the quality of work you do that you've got the former fire chief and the current fire chief right there. Both of you in support and, you know, as far as what EMS does, those folks would know better than anyone. So we appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Yes, come on up.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I would just like to offer my support to the EMS Council. Some of the more recent projects, we've worked with them, we have firefighters that go over to the council and get credentialed as instructors and then they can come back and teach CPR at first aid to our city workforce. So that's been a big benefit. They mentioned the grant writing assistance, you know, our first ambulance was purchased with a grant. So that's been very beneficial for us and has had a very positive impact on our taxpayers. So I definitely offer them my full support.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing that. Thank you all. We appreciate you being here tonight. Okay, next on the list, we have the Bristol Regional Tourism Marketing Corporation, Explore Bristol, and Mr. Matt Bowles is here with us tonight. Welcome, Matt.
Good evening. Hello, welcome. Thank you, appreciate that.
Yep.
Let me see. I want to push a button. There's one and three chance I'm going to do it correctly. I did it correctly, okay. I just wanted to thank the council and thank the city for your all's support. I wanted to just talk a little bit about ourselves as an organization. Bristol Regional Tourism Marketing Corporation, that's our long name, that's our official tax ID name, but we're known as Explore Bristol. So that's the brand that the community and visitors know us as. That was prudlong of a name to be too cool to get people to visit here, so we came up with Explore Bristol. Just to let you know how our board works, in terms of representation, I'll just quickly go through that. There's a one voting seat, it's 102,000 voting seats. These come from lodging taxes. Our goal is to drive more people to come here, to spend more money on lodging, to spend more money on shopping, dining, and those tax rates that are on the meals tax and the lodging tax. The goal is to continue to grow that so it benefits the city and improves the quality of life. That's the whole goal of a tourism program. We have other opportunities for ex officio seats as well for representation. We appreciate the city, you know, your support of being active and within our board. So that's just a little bit about how we are. We're also a 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization. So we operate like any other nonprofit with our board of directors. You all assign who the seat is and then it's voted through, through that board. This is a current list of our board. I thought, well, I haven't showed that lately and just to show, we have our directors and you can see the ones that are voting directors and also ex officio. You know, there's a wide range, birthplace, a country music museum, you know, different hotels, Hard Rock Hotel Casino in Bristol. If you all don't know Christine, she's amazing, doing an amazing job there. She's their vice president of marketing. Matt Lavender at Bristol Sportsplex. We work with everyone, but these are our board members. You'll, I will note on the bottom left, Matt Slagel, who's commissioner of Sullivan County, Tennessee. Sullivan County has come on as a supporter as well and has a voting seat as well, beginning actually this month. So they are partnering with us as well and that's just a little bit of who our board setup is. And I'll get into the fun stuff and I'm going to go quick because I have a lot of slides, so don't panic. There's, I'm just going to show you some of the high-end stuff. There's a lot of things that we're doing that probably not on there, like we're working with, you know, Bristol Rhythm Soccer right now. We're working with a plethora of individuals, but I'm just going to go over some of the highlights. We are in the Tennessee and Virginia travel guides. There's hundreds of thousands of these that are sent out. What I do want to point out, I like the opportunity in Tennessee where we can list the casino, so you can see that in the ad, and you will see Virginia attractions in the Tennessee guide. And conversely, in Virginia, which they allow us to do an advertorial-style ad, that's why they look different, there is, you know, the track and it's in Tennessee. But what that does is it drives traffic to all of our hotels, no matter what side of the street it's on. And that's where the money comes in, from hotels, lodging, meals. So that's a great opportunity. We've been able to work with both states that they view us a little differently. So I think we're the only entity that promote the casino in Tennessee. So that's an opportunity. I just want to show another marketing piece. This is one that we just started this past, this beginning of the year. With outdoor recreation, they took a little bit of a hit, as we all know, with Hurricane Helene. A lot of our outfitters and some of our outdoor recreation folks have struggled a little bit. We're trying to do some push there. Our fall wasn't as great as you all know because it just, we didn't have that fall beauty and those travelers, because the more important thing of responding to the crisis that was going in was the most important thing with a lot of those line teams staying in the hotels and whatnot. Social media, we still lead the region and the greater region, so we have the largest social media following and we push that a lot. I'll get into some of the stats behind that about why that's important, but this generates a lot of travel for us and a lot of expenditures in our community. When you look at social media, and this is, I started for the fiscal year, July 1 through end of February, the most important thing, there's two things on this slide. It's the ROI based on how many impressions we get, which were about 4 million impressions year-to-date. That conversion is about equivalent to $48,000 in advertising. And that is just based on industry standards of how you look at the cost and the value of an impression. But the other point I would like to point out is when we do social and you look at our social, we don't drive people to our website necessarily, explorebristol.com. If we're doing something that is promoting, let's say, Rhythm and Roots, we're driving straight to their website. We're not one of those entities that tries to get clicks on our site if we can drive them straight to buy tickets from the person who's selling them. So when you see our ads for the concerts at Hard Rock, it goes straight to Hard Rock. We don't want them to go to a landing page on a different site and you all know, when you all see this, you click away. So the most important number- So the most important number on there is the post-clicks and the other post-clicks. We're generating clicks to those other sites of almost 200,000, 187,000. So that is a, that is a strategy that we will continue to follow. We're going to drive them to the actual entity, whether it's a restaurant, a hotel. We're continuing our display advertising at Tri-City Airport. We get a ton of comments about this. We've had people that have tried to buy it from us. We're not selling it. We have the space. And we kind of did it as like the state line, so you'll see some Virginia attractions on the left side and some Tennessee attractions on the right side. We've updated this just a little bit to freshen it up, but this has had a huge impact for us because these are individuals that are flying into other cities that may not be Bristol. And we want them to come back and explore our city the next time they come through. And if you've been in the airport, it's pretty big, so it's pretty cool. We like it. We hope you do, too. Christmas, we love Christmas. I want to give a shout out to the city manager and the staff. It's so easy. Some people don't know, we help coordinate the lighting of the Christmas tree. So we hire a company that does that. They do work for Ballad and for Metaview and for Southwest Virginia Harwood to help decorate that tree. And we appreciate the city because it is spot-on allowing us to bring in the lifts and to do it professionally. It takes them a day or two to get it up there, and usually about a day to get the lights down. And then we put that arch up there as well that is a good photo spot, and the hotels seem to like it. But we do a lot of Christmas push. You'll see us do thematic pushes, whether it's in fall or whatever. And I'm going to click this. I hope this isn't too loud. I'm not going to play the whole video of Santa Claus, but we do a lot of boosted video that we'll do in-house video. We create this content. We push it out. Santa Claus is going to tell you all these things, and we drive ads on YouTube, on Facebook, on Instagram. We send them out to media to get more people that will come to Bristol. This is the long-form version, so I won't go through the whole thing, but it, the long form's 90 seconds, but this is just one little example. If you want to see all of our videos, you can go online and check them out. Any of this content you all need, please let us know. We'll be happy to share it for free. That's kind of the whole point of what we do. So a lot of our partners use this as well. So I'm going to skip through, see how this works on the clicker here. Oh, it worked. Okay. We did, through some of our grant, matching grants that we do, we do event-driven digital billboards. We get some of those complimentary in the Tri-Cities because we purchase without, throughout the region, but we also target areas like Western Carolina and Bluefield and Knoxville, trying to get people to come to event-driven billboards. Some of the billboards are square. Some of them are your traditional horizontals. So we try to push out different things to get people awareness. And in those areas that we run billboards, we also run search engine marketing tactics, and as well, it's also layered with social, targeted social. So there's some more examples of them. We specifically push on events. That seems to drive well to hotels. Again, I talked a little bit about Hurricane Helene. We had to switch a little bit in the fall, so we were able to create this the very next day. I'm mentioning this only because we did have some struggles in the fall. We did put some pauses on our fall campaign. It just wasn't the right time. We didn't have the beauty. There was a, there was a crisis going on in the greater region. A lot of our hotels were full because of construction and line people that were coming through. That did negatively affect retail and some restaurants that we've talked to and our outdoor folks, so that's why we were looking at others. But we did put up travel alerts of how to get to Bristol as roads opened. The cities, and I will say, our regional tourism partners in Northeast Tennessee and Southwest Virginia were all over this, so we jumped in on there and tried to do that. That did affect one of our bigger projects for the year. We launched the PSL Trail. I will tell you, the PSL Trail was supposed to launch the Monday after the hurricane. So we were able to stop all advertising because we can't launch a trail that is themed around pumpkin spice latte because we know how amazing that is. And we have different participants throughout, from Union 41 to your different coffee shops, as a hook to drive people to do fall travel. We did it lightly. We just let it be native, and then we pushed those funds toward Christmas and then the campaign of outdoor recreation that we started in January. But we're going to go bigger and better in the fall next year. But we also work with group travel. We partner with different attractions that will attend. American Bus Association is the biggest one. That's our new booth because we now have the new Hard Rock in there. We were using the close-up of Roulette. Now we can actually show the building. So we're able to push that out there and bring in more bus groups. Bus groups spend a lot of money. A bus usually has 45 to 55 people on it, and sometimes you may see the bus parked out here because they're going to the Birthplace of Country Music Museum. But no, when you see those buses at the hotel, they are spending thousands of dollars each night, and they're also spending thousands of dollars in meals and shopping each time they come through. Karen Hester is a huge bus person. If you want to know the bus business in Bristol, she is out there selling fudge to the world, and those buses love her. So she is an ambassador for sure. IBMA, we were able to do IBMA again this year. Thank you, Virginia Tourism. They do a great job of putting that in, putting that there. Birthplace of Country Music Sessions Hotel also attend. It's always a great opportunity to push our music heritage in front of thousands and thousands of people. It is moving from Raleigh to Chattanooga this year. I will let you know that. So we're in some new territory. Explore Bristol Visitor Guide, that's the new version that you're seeing up there. It just came in earlier within this past month. We split up our print of 85,000 to 40,000 and 45,000. The reason is we wanted to wait for the casino to come open and get that imagery in there. And so now, instead of it saying "coming soon," it is open. It is fully open. So we purposely printed in two drops in the past year, so we just have our new version now. So we changed the cover a little bit so you'll know, and we updated all the content. And I will say, the day that we went to print, we were able to stop the presses and get Cameo Theater back in there, State of Bristol. And so Samantha is very happy. I've already met with her, trying to help her with some things that they're doing. But it is update, and this thing is flying off the shelves. We've actually had to print 10,000 more than we anticipated because of demand. So that's a good problem. Google Analytics, again, this is in our past year. You can see what those certain, those pages are. Again, we drive to other people as much as we can through a lot of our marketing. And then you can see some of the cities. If y'all need to see these data sets, Atlanta, Nashville, Northern Virginia, they always run in those top three. I think they've been in the top three for the last three years. But you can see some of those emerging markets or how things are looking in terms of different cities and regions that people are interested in Bristol. I'm almost done. The visitor center, you can see it, it's building. We had a little bit of pause, as you all know, with, we found rail bed. It was a fun, fun little time. I'm looking at Jake, he's smiling. He knows. We have talked a lot about old rail bed in our meetings, in our board meetings, and we've got it all out. No one knew it was there. It's hard to get rid of rail bed, and it's not an easy process, but if anyone needs an anvil, please let us know. We have, we have lots of rail on it. But that visitor center looks like the train station. It's on purpose to let you all know that space is owned by the City of Bristol, Tennessee, and our rent is a dollar a year for 40 years. So that's the partnership that we are utilizing in that space, and Parks and Rec will handle the outside. So inside, I just wanted to show you one of the reception areas. We have some of these display cases that will drive people to different attractions. Hard Rock is one, Bristol Moore Speedway, Birthplace of Country Music Museum Downtown. Those are some of those that are in those display cases. It's kind of hard to see. I don't have a pointer, but in that bottom area, those are all display racks for visitor information. There'll be digital screens, looping video, and the goal is to drive people throughout the region, and we'll have weekend hours as well. And that's been something that we've dreamt about for 15, 20 years. I just wanted to point this out from Virginia Tourism, and this is my last slide. I just want to show the amount of growth that you all had in those lodging taxes, meals taxes, those changes, those increases that you all had on that had a great impact. I think we're number two, and Mayor Navy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're number two in the state in terms of growth based on collections. It's neck and neck with the Portsmouth area, so those decisions that you all made are starting to bring those in. And this is through 2023. Those 2024 numbers should be out very soon. I don't, and I think you're to see yet another huge jump, so especially in employment and local taxes. So that's what I have, and I went quick. I hope, I hope I went quick.
Thank you so much, Matt, and thank you for the work that you and John do in your office. It's hard to believe that this much work comes out of an office of two, and so just remind everybody of that. Thank you so much for all the promotions that you're doing, unique promotions that's really capturing the eye, I feel like, of those new visitors that are coming to town. I will say, the Tri-City Airport is brilliant. I don't know how many times somebody will send me a picture of that and said, "This is awesome that, you know, are coming to Bristol through the airport for the first time," or something. So I love hearing that. Christmas, I love how the tree and the selfie area, all of that, I think you do a great job on that, so thank you for the work you do on that. I think it's important to point out that the money that we give to Explore Bristol and all these things that they're doing, Matt has been very proactive in applying for grants through Virginia Tourism and other entities that he's able to then leverage those dollars. So the more money he has, the more he had, the more he can get, and so, and the more promotion you can do. And you do a great job going to the shows, and I will say that display, the picture doesn't do it justice. There are people that will walk up just to have their picture made by that. It's, it's an attraction in itself.
It's pretty bold.
Yeah, but it looks, it looks amazing. So thanks again for all that you do, and I'll open it up for any questions from the council.
Well, I'll say very quickly, really incredible stuff you all are doing, obviously. Appreciate the focus on buses. I've talked to Karen about that, and that's, that's, she's a big fan.
Yep.
And with good reason. I mean, you bring a lot of people all at once who are specifically here to spend money, so love that. And my only, my only criticism
Okay.
is pumpkin spice latte. I'm not, I'm not a pumpkin spice man. I recommend apple cinnamon.
I'm with you on that. I shouldn't say this because
I'll give that, I'll give the pumpkin spice to her. Get an apple cinnamon thing going, I'm in.
I'll tell you, aroma makes a killer pumpkin spice latte.
They do.
They do. So I would check it out.
I'll give it a shot.
Yeah.
But no, in all seriousness, though, you all are doing a great job, and
Thank you.
we appreciate everything you do.
I always wondered, when he finished his presentation, I was thinking, is it appropriate to applaud? I mean, they're doing so much with the small investment that we give them, and they're just knocking it out of the ballpark. I really appreciate what y'all are doing, and I'm looking forward to y'all finishing up the new location there, especially with weekend hours, because we have so many people that come in right now, and they're coming in on weekends because they're working during the week. And right now, we direct them to some of our local shops where they can pick up the collectibles and stuff. But now they're going to have an official tourist office where they can go to, and they can get the official materials, and they can get direction to other places. And I'm just totally excited about this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate those kind words. Thank you.
And I just want to thank you as well. I appreciate all that you've done. It was a pleasure serving on your board for about a year and a half. Hated to drop that, but appreciate the work you do. Those numbers you showed at the end were impressive because it wasn't just a COVID uptick. It was before COVID, too. You saw the increase very dramatic, so that was great. And on a personal note, I want to thank you for how you all, you and John both handled the Helene stuff.
Yeah.
You, you still promoted Bristol, but you helped out our neighbors. I'm a Bristolian now, but I grew up in Damascus, and there were several posts you did in support of Damascus, and it meant a lot, so I appreciate how you handled that.
We're still going to help our neighbors. Anyone that's coming to Damascus or Avenue, they're going to come through Bristol and vice versa.
Yep.
So it makes sense to all work together, and I'm glad to hear some of the updates that, you know, the challenges and whatnot of getting that back online. I think they're down to 26 miles left on the trail, but that's, it's a huge improvement.
They've come a long way. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list is Believe in Bristol, and I believe Maggie is here. Welcome, Maggie.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name's Maggie Elliott, and I'm here on behalf of Believe in Bristol to discuss our $70,000 funding request for fiscal year 2026. As many of you know, Believe in Bristol is dedicated to the economic development and cultural vibrancy of historic downtown Bristol. Believe in Bristol is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and an accredited Virginia Main Street program. Our mission is to unify and strengthen downtown Bristol by promoting its history, facilitating future growth, and fostering a vibrant community built on arts, culture, heritage, music, and economic development. Did y'all get new microphones since the last time I was here? It's throwing me off. Our work aligns with the city's strategic vision, and we serve as a vital link between the city, business owners, and community members, which helps to create a thriving downtown district that benefits everyone. So why does downtown matter? I'll be brief because there's many, many reasons. But a strong downtown is essential to the overall success of Bristol. It serves as a center for small businesses, a hub for arts and culture, and gathering space for the community. Independent businesses in downtown contribute significantly to the local economy by keeping profits within the community, supporting local families, and fostering entrepreneurship. Additionally, a vibrant downtown helps attract and retain businesses across the city by creating a positive image of Bristol as a place to live, work, and visit. Downtown Bristol is also an employment hub, currently ranking as the third-largest principal employer in Bristol, Virginia. But beyond job creation, the area supports the city's financial help through tax revenues, tourism, and private investment. A successful downtown strengthens property values, reduces economic leakage, and encourages reinvestment into the city, making a crucial component to the Bristol's long-term growth strategy. Believe in Bristol operates under the Main Street Four Point approach, which includes organization, design, economic vitality, and promotions. Organization focuses on building strong partnerships between businesses, local government, and volunteers to ensure a coordinated effort in revitalizing downtown. Our work is made possible by a dedicated board of directors, engaged stakeholders, and a network of volunteers who help execute events and initiatives that make downtown a better place to live and work. You can see in terms of those private dollars that are leveraged, we have contributed $750,000 of grants leveraged, and we have over 350 of grants planned for, in progress for the current fiscal year leading into next fiscal year. The visual appeal of downtown Bristol is a key part of its success, and that is our design committee. Public art projects, streetscape enhancements, and beautification initiatives help create a vibrant environment that attracts visitors and new businesses alike. Continued investment in downtown design ensures that Bristol remains a welcoming and visually appealing destination. Our focus on economic vitality supports business retention, expansion, and recruitment. The Downtown Entrepreneur Grant Competition has provided critical funding to help new businesses open and existing businesses expand. In 2024, nine businesses received grants totaling $50,000, and 20 entrepreneurs participated in our six-week training program. By fostering a strong local economy, we help create jobs, fill vacant storefronts, and ensure a thriving downtown district. Believe in Bristol actively markets downtown through events, social media, and digital outreach. Our event programming, including the Border Bash Summer Concert Series, which is leading up to celebrating its 25th year, attracts thousands of attendees and provides a major boost to downtown businesses. The July 4 Parade, State Street Trick or Treat, and the Halloween Parade, and Christmas Tree Lighting all drive significant foot traffic and spending in the district. In 2024, our website attracted over 36,000 unique visitors with social media content reaching over 300,000 people. Our work is guided by two key transformation strategies, food experience and arts and entertainment. This helps our organization stay aligned to our specific asset-based programming and prioritize our work plans. Downtown Bristol is more than just a historic district. It's a key economic driver for our community. Currently, it is home to 1,195 full-time jobs, with 493 of those located on the Virginia side. This makes it the third largest employer in Bristol, Virginia, following Hard Rock and Electric Mechanical. Beyond employment, downtown contributes significantly to the city's tax base, generating, generating over $684,000 in restaurant food taxes, $899,000 in lodging taxes, and nearly $96,000 in admission taxes in 2024 alone. I would like to point out that this is just within the downtown district. That admissions tax was amazing to see that that nearly doubled. Downtown's success has a direct impact on Bristol's overall economic health. A thriving downtown attracts new businesses, retains talent, and improves our quality of life. It also plays a major role in the city's tourism sector and more than, with more than 250,000 visitors each year exploring our shops, restaurants, and cultural attractions. The city's support of Believe in Bristol is not just an expense. It's an investment in economic development. Our organization serves in this extension of city departments by facilitating business recruitment, tourism promotion, and community engagement, all while leveraging volunteer support and private funding. In 2024 alone, downtown Bristol, Virginia saw $1.2 million in private investment, matched with $611,000 in public investment, demonstrating the power of collaborative funding. By approving this funding request, the city council is ensuring that Bristol remains a competitive, business-friendly, and culturally rich community. Believe in Bristol will continue to maximize every dollar invested to create economic and social benefits that extend beyond downtown and into the greater Bristol area. Believe in Bristol leads several initiatives that drive economic growth and community engagement. In 2024, our efforts resulted in the creation of new businesses, net seven to be exact, increased tourism, and enhanced support for local entrepreneurs. And we had some big wins that we can't help but brag about. The Entrepreneur Grant Competition, which awarded $50,000 to nine new and expanding businesses while providing training to 20 entrepreneurs. Through the Facade Improvement Grant Program, we supported local businesses and property owners in upgrading storefronts and making the area more inviting. We were able to leverage public and private funding to revitalize five downtown Bristol, Virginia storefronts, totaling $25,000 invested just from the Believe in Bristol grant funds. Downtown Gift Card Program launched at the end of 2024 with over 25 participating merchants. This is a great economic development tool that offers a direct benefit to small business owners while making it easier for consumers to shop locally. We look forward to growing the marketing and benefits of the program this year. We also got, oh, long way. We also got a little creative with our holiday promotions and it really benefited with our reach. If you didn't see Beetlejuice, where were you for Halloween? This is a project for 2024. I would be remiss not to highlight, and that is the Johnny Wood Pedestrian Plaza Project. Brought to Believe in Bristol team and the city of Bristol, Virginia by a passionate property owner. This area in downtown Bristol had been forgotten and neglected and was in desperate need of some TLC. Believe in Bristol acquired grant funds to apply to this space, which included repainting of the Art in Public Places statue that was on site, purchasing and installing an overhead light installation, and commissioning a vibrant mural. Thanks to the City of Bristol Public Works Department on their assistance with landscaping and electrical needs, as well as removal of the unused fountain in that space. That space has already been used for several community events, including the Kid Zone during Rhythm and Roots and a Taylor Swift-inspired dance party benefit. Community members have also been spotted doing some morning yoga and throwing around some sports balls. This public-private partnership has been so important to us. If you didn't laugh at that, what are you doing? You're not paying attention. This public-private partnership has been so important to us and we look forward to seeing the space used more. We continue to update the area for better utilization. So what's next for Believe in Bristol? All that, where do we go from here? Elevated seasonal and holiday atmosphere. You saw some increased atmosphere during the Christmas season. We want to see that during all of our seasons. So looking for additional opportunities where we can really stand out among the crowd during those special seasons. Our downtown public art and placemaking projects. These are ongoing. We have an installation coming in the spring of a long-term public art project, as well as some additional opportunities for murals as well. Community events, familiar favorites and new, sticking to our transformation-based strategies for those events. Our First Friday Monthly Themes, really growing those First Fridays. Having the, having that participation from our downtown merchants has been really beneficial. The Downtown Gift Card Promotion, this blew us out of the water. We launched it later than we had initially planned. There were just some supply delays on that, but it blew us out of the water. Merchants have been really, really pleased with it and we're excited to be able to give them this added benefit. Beautification in downtown, this includes a downtown cleanup and some parking improvements. It also includes a small area planning grant that Believe in Bristol has acquired through Virginia Main Street for Cumberland, which we're working with city staff on that planning grant and looking for additional funding for execution of that plan once it's complete. And then potentially Restaurant Week and some new transformation strategy-focused special events. We are in the process of new strategic planning, which could come to light new transformational strategies for our organization and adapting to those as our downtown grows. For fiscal year 2026, Believe in Bristol is requesting $70,000 in funding for this, from the city of Bristol, Virginia. This funding will be used to expand the Border Bash Series to attract 10,000 people for the 25th anniversary. That lineup reveal is coming in April. Launching our new transformation strategies and asset-based events, as well as continuing our community favorites. Continuing the Facade Improvement Grant Program to help revitalize more properties. We had an abundance of demand for this program. Unfortunately, we only had the 25,000 in grant funds on the Virginia side of town. So looking at additional grant funding opportunities to be able to support this initiative. In supporting our entrepreneurs with business training and mentorship, we have gotten so much success in our Entrepreneur Grant Business Competition and growing that every year, as well as our Made in Bristol brand-specific opportunities through those small-scale producers and ways that we can leverage their businesses. This investment will allow Believe in Bristol to continue its mission of supporting local businesses, enhancing downtown spaces, and fostering economic growth. A reduction in financial support would mean fewer business resources, decreased event programming, and an overall decline in the progress we have made in revitalizing downtown Bristol. The momentum we have built over the years could slow, impacting not only the businesses downtown, but also the city's economic outlook as a whole. Thank you for your time and consideration. I welcome any questions regarding our programs and impact at this time.
All right. Thank you so much, Maggie, and thank you for the work that Believe in Bristol is doing. And I know being a designated Main Street is super important to a community and we're proud that we are Virginia Main Street. And I want to say also, I think you've done a great job at also going after those grants, as you mentioned, whether it's through DHCD, through the Main Street Grants, or facade improvements, and also the community business launch grants. I was just wondering, on the, the entrepreneur section, yeah, the 15,000. So would that be, I know that you all usually apply for the community business launch. Is that going to be something you apply for again this year?
Yes. So our schedule currently for our e-grant is to make sure that we have adequate grant funding. We have a baseline of $50,000 to be our, our award pool. So in order to acquire that grant, those grant funds, we're on an every-other-year basis. So we anticipate our, that contribution being towards our existing business support. That's mentorship opportunities, some business trainings, and those sorts of things during this calendar year and being able to launch the e-grant at the end of this calendar year when we've acquired that grant. But yes, community business launch is on our list, as well as the downtown investment grant for the facade improvement.
Okay. All right. Excellent. And I'll just say, I think you all did a great job in also getting a grant to redo the Johnny Wood Plaza. And I think it looks fantastic. I'm glad to see that area cleaned up and I think it makes a huge difference in that area in downtown. So thank you. I will open it up for any other comments or questions.
I'll, I'll go first. Thank you for being here, Maggie. We appreciate that. I, I love the gift card program that you all are doing. That's really cool and it's a great way to make things a little more accessible to folks. Great work on that. That's been cool to see that roll out and do so well. Then also, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't talk about Halloween, just how, how big that has become and just how nobody else in the region really does anything quite like that. So that was a great, great thing to tap into. So great work on that and looking forward to this year's events.
Thank you. And I think I made eye contact with a couple of people during the Halloween Parade and it was a blur. And so I'm sorry if I look like a deer in headlights because we did come around that corner and I was not anticipating that crowd. So thank you to anyone and everyone who attended.
Well, I'll say first to the Vice Mayor, I, I think that around Halloween Parade time, all five of us should commit to dressing up and coordinating our outfits and being involved.
This is a public meeting.
This is a public meeting.
Public noted. I like it.
Publicly noted. Take note. So I will say a couple of things. So obviously I love, I love the results of the facade improvement program. And I've only heard good things about the Entrepreneur Grant from, not only from people who received them, but from businesses that did not, that applied but did not receive them. They've had good things to say about what a nice opportunity it is and, you know, hoping to be able to do it again. Incredible work on the Johnny Wood Plaza. I've, I've went down there and walked through it, not only during the daytime, but also at night. If, if anyone listening to this has not done that, especially at night, it is really a sight to see. You know, with very simple, you know, the light thing over top of it. It makes sense. It looks great. You know, I, maybe I'm biased. I've been, I guess I was in 15 or 20 big cities across the country last year for work. And I went to all their downtowns and most of their downtowns looked exactly the same as the next one. Bristol has a unique downtown. And, you know, again, maybe I'm biased, but I think it's the best one. So we appreciate what you do and we look forward to what you're going to do this coming year.
Thank you.
And just a quick thank you again for everything, not to reiterate what everyone else has said. Halloween's great. Johnny Wood Plaza's great. Thank you all for everything you're doing because it's, it's busy and downtown's busy. And what you guys do, it brings more people down. So that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to seeing what some of those new events turn out to be.
Yes, we have many good ideas. I'm excited as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next on the list, EO, we have Shawna Tilson here tonight. Welcome, Shawna. And I believe also Shawna's provided these handouts as well at your seats. The lime green handout.
Yep. Yes. So thank you so much for having me here. I'm Shawna Tilson. I'm the Director of Development for EO. I've brought you all just a copy of this that you can have and also our organizational brochure to keep. So I'm with EO. We are a local nonprofit organization that serves the entire region of Southwest Virginia, 21 localities in total, including the city of Bristol. A lot of people ask me, what does EO stand for? What does that mean something? You know? And EO is actually Latin for go. And we feel that really represents the action-oriented way we approach the work that we do. We are respectfully requesting $10,000 in support for our programs and initiatives, which I'm going to go over with you tonight. Our mission is to research, pilot, and scale big ideas into solutions that increase the quality of life. And we believe that this change happens when people work together, when coordinate, when efforts are coordinated, collaborative, and bold. So why do we do that? What are the reasons behind this work? Several years ago, there was a study done and it showed that if you live just six hours up the road, you are likely to have an additional decade to live. People in our region live on average about eight years less than people who live in Northern Virginia. And so we thought that really needed to change and we started looking at solutions to help change that. Another major issue in our region is that there are 7,000 children under the age of five who lack access to high-quality care and the education that they need. And then also, our region has a workforce participation rate of only 55%. And the emerging workforce is leaving our region in very high numbers. I think the state of Virginia is expecting an increase in the workforce by 26%, while our region is seeing in the next year, 16% leave. And we want to change this. And we know that the well-being of people increases when they have access to educational opportunities and economic opportunities. So how do we increase these opportunities? Our approach is simple yet powerful. We listen, we research, we build, and we measure. So we listen, we pay attention to emerging issues. We bring the people impacted by these issues to the table when we start looking into solutions. We research. Everything we do is incredibly data-driven. We have an entire department that's just research and analytics so that we can really understand what's going on in the community. And then we build. So we create new programs. And when we build these programs, we make sure that there are measures in place so that we can then measure and see what's working, see what's not working, adjust, come up with new approaches, and make sure that we're having an impact. And so by doing that, we focus on three areas. Our pillars are early childhood care and education, workforce innovation, and thriving communities. So with early childhood care and education, we feel like that has a double impact, really. The children in our region are getting a quality start. They're in a safe place. And also, when you increase access to childcare, you're removing another barrier of workforce participation. Workforce innovation, we take a very unique approach to workforce innovation and I'll talk about that a little bit in a couple of minutes. And then thriving communities. We bring people, resources, and data together to come up with solutions to our most complex challenges. And so our three pillars of work come together and follow along our cradle-to-career framework. So as you can see, we start with babies and toddlers and ensure that they have safe, quality care, and we work towards kindergarten preparedness. So in the city of Bristol, 43% of children entering kindergarten are not prepared. That's a pretty big number. When you start out and you're already behind, it's really hard to catch up. And we see that trend continue when you look at third-grade reading proficiency levels. Again, there are 44% of third graders in the city of Bristol that aren't reading at grade level. And the reason that that's such a big number and that third grade is so important is because up until third grade, you're learning to read. And once you pass that threshold, you're reading to learn. So once you're behind at that point, it's really, really hard to catch back up. So a lot of our work is in that early childhood education piece, making sure that children get the best start possible. Then we move into the workforce preparedness. And you say, oh, look, but those are little kids still in high school. Our workforce innovation programs, we start with youth. We really think that that's where you can have the change and we can really drive those numbers. About, I want to say, and again, so workforce participation rate in the region is 55%. In the city of Bristol, it's 50%. And when we think of workforce participation, that's people who are able to work but aren't working. And a few years ago, there was a study done by the Annie E. Casey Foundation that showed that a huge percentage of young adults weren't participating in the workforce. They were graduating school. They weren't going to college. They weren't in the workforce. They weren't joining the military. And we thought, what? So what is happening? And that's where we kind of started researching. We started listening. And there's a big percentage of students who are growing up in homes where they don't see parents get up and go to work every day for different reasons. Maybe they're living with their grandparents and their grandparents are already retired. But they're not having that exposure to what it is to be in the workforce or what careers are out there. And that's where our Career Commons Program and our Ignite Program comes into play, which I'll go into in a little more depth just here in a second. Then you can see we have adults at the end of the spectrum. And this is where our shared services and our program pathway really comes into play. So we actually work with people to get them credentialed in early childhood education. So this is a group of people that we're able to help get skill set, get them into the workforce. So right there's the workforce participation increasing, while also improving quality care and education for our early childhood experience. And then that in turn increases childhood slots because you have more people able to work in that field, which then removes that. work in that field, which then removes that barrier for parents. So, then they're able to be a part of the workforce. So, it's this full cycle. And all of our work is underpinned by our well-being programs. So, again, making sure that people have the resources they need to be successful. And so, here is a list of our programs. I'm not going to go in-depth into all of them. We have our Ready Region Southwest, which that's really that early childhood education piece. So, we work with childcare centers. We work with day homes. We work with pre-K, Head Start, to make sure that their quality, help them get the professional development needed to improve their quality, help them find childcare workers. Then we have, kind of, you can move down further, and you see our Career Pathways Program and our Shared Services Alliance. So, that's where we're training new childcare professionals and upskilling professionals that are already there. Then Career Commons Internships, that's our workforce innovation piece. And then the rest of that down the list is really where we're bringing communities together and providing those resources so that people can be successful. And I want to focus on Career Commons. Let's see. Yeah. So, I have a video up next. We'll see if it'll work. I hope it does. It's not working. That's okay. I'll paint you a picture with my words. So, imagine you're a seventh-grade student, and you've, you know, you've maybe been to the doctor, so you know about being a doctor, and you've gone to school, so you know about being a teacher. But you hear everyone saying, oh, if you want to live in southwest Virginia, there's really nothing here. If you want to be successful, you're going to have to go to college, and you're going to have to leave. There's nothing here for you. Or just graduate and don't do anything. And so, we bring every seventh-grade student in southwest Virginia, including Virginia Middle School. They were all here in November. They come to our center. They walk in the doors, and you're in a mini-town. And there's 20 storefronts. You have tourism represented. You have Food City and all of their careers, pharmacy, the warehouse, forklift simulators. You have CGI where you can code and really work from anywhere and be a part of that. You have Wise Solutions where you get to engage with robotics. You have New People's Bank where you get to learn about all the different banking careers. You have AEP where you get to learn about all of the jobs in energy. You have VDOT where you learn about engineering. And that's just some of them. Ballad Health is there. And one thing about this, you get to visit all of these different storefronts and do activities where you get to see, oh, I could use this skill set. Oh, you know what? I've never measured anything before with a measuring tape or built something out of Lincoln Logs in our berries part. I'm actually pretty good at that. I never thought of that. And then these ideas are being sparked. And the thing that's so special about it is every storefront in this location is something local. So, not only are they getting to be, see themselves in these roles as adults that maybe they would have never seen before, but it's stuff that's here local. So, not only can they grow up and be successful and be an engineer or learn that they can survey roads by flying a drone, but they get to see that they can do that right here in southwest Virginia. They don't have to leave to be a part of that. And so, that's what we've been doing the last several months, is we've had the seventh-grade students come through. Right now, we're starting with 11th grade, but we're taking it a step further with them. They get to do the career exploration, but we're going over resume writing. We're going over what it's like to be in an interview, those types of skills that you can't really get unless you do them. And then next year, we're expanding that even more. So, third graders will come because it's never too early to kind of get an idea of all the things that you can be in life. And then we'll expand to 10th grade also, which they'll go through and do the whole thing, but with a financial literacy piece tied to that as well, so that they can grow up and be successful adults who also know how to spend their money. So, it's not as good as the video, but you maybe got an idea of what we're doing and why it's so important. And then we follow that up with internships for high school students. And then we work with these businesses. We place students. They're paid internships, so there's not a barrier there for people who maybe come from low-income backgrounds. You know, a lot of people can't just go get an internship. They don't have family connections, or they have to be paid. They can't, they got to work in the summer. And so, this is making sure that everyone can participate. So, here are some of our 2024 highlights. So, just this fall, we had over 2,000 seventh graders come through Career Commons. Again, there was, over 100 of those were Bristol City School students. We had over, we trained over 200 new early childhood educators. So, that's helping that, that filled there more spots. We opened our regional workforce and child development hub in Abington. That was the old Kmart. If you're not sure, it looks a little different in that picture. So, we'll be serving 30,000 students, including the city of Bristol Schools. And we provided 300 childcare slots there. Bristol City, there are some Bristol City children at that childcare facility. And we did over 1,000 developmental screenings. So, I think that's a really good example of our thriving communities work, where we're bringing different people together. We're bringing parents together. We're bringing childcare centers together and pediatricians together to help make sure children are helping those, meeting those developmental milestones and making sure there's early intervention if they're not. And so, as far as how we align with the city of Bristol, we feel that there are the five, these are the five strategic focus areas from the city of Bristol's vision that we support with our programs and our outcomes. We feel that our visions align pretty well. Our vision is that communities are thriving and people are well. And I think it would be wonderful if we could work together to really see both of our visions through. And that's it.
All right. Thank you Shawna. What a great presentation. I'll tell you, I've been through the EO building up at, if you're not familiar with it, it's in the old Kmart at exit 17, I believe. And it is amazing if you haven't had an opportunity. So, thank you for going through that presentation and explaining all the offerings that you all have there. And thank you for all the work that you're doing because you're right, from starting with the childcare center that's there and then walking through all the opportunities that the youth can see when they go through that building and see all the jobs that are available right here in this region is amazing. So, thank you so much for the work that you all are doing and for that presentation. It was great. So, I'll open it up for any other comments or questions.
Well, first, I want to say thank you for your presentation. I've been a little bit familiar with the work that you all do and kind of where it grew from out of United Way, I believe. You really are, and I think I heard some of the key words, you know, you all seem to understand trauma-informed care, ACEs, those type of things that are so important that present barriers to children early on that you're almost, you know, playing behind the eight ball. You're starting off at a disadvantage. And you all are able to kind of help people bypass those barriers. And that's a very big deal because if you're set up for success young, you're going to, it's going to pay off later. So, I appreciate your presentation, and I appreciate what you all do.
Thank you.
But they also help with reducing barriers on the other end with people who are trying to establish their careers, and they've got kids, they don't have anyone to take care of their kids, and they provide childcare for a lot of those situations as well. Then they'll help with arranging to meet family needs so that people can just go to work to pay the bills. Because a lot of people in our area, we hear a lot of our lower-income individuals, they want to work, but they have so many complications that make it hard to work. And EO really helps with things like that, just practical, day-to-day things.
Thank you.
Thank you Shawna for being here. I appreciate the presentation. And I will say, I had an opportunity to volunteer the day that VMS went there and got to see the kids explore the space. They did assign me to the automotive booth, and I feel like those kids are not prepared to look at cars and like, that was a poor choice on your all's part there.
Sorry.
Just tossing that out there. I do appreciate, sorry if that's me, I do appreciate all the work you all are doing, the goals that you have, and kind of the vision for responding to some of the issues we have in the region. I do, let me frame this some way so it's not a bad question. With EO kind of branching out from United Way, coming out from under that umbrella, a lot more possibilities, a lot more potential there, including other possibilities for funding streams. It did kind of surprise me to see you coming before council to request funding from the city, from the taxpayers. I guess with all the other potential funding streams and sources, why are you seeking locality funding as well?
Yeah, absolutely. We are, for the first time ever, really being able to expand our programming into the city of Bristol. We've been able to do a little bit here and there, but most of our programming or funding comes from other sources. And we're wanting to really be able to expand into Bristol. And so, that funding will go to help expand those programs into the city of Bristol more. When we were part of United Way, we were restricted geographically. So, we weren't able to do really anything over on this side. You know, you got to the Washington County line, and that was it. And so, now that we're out from under that, we're working to grow where the funds are coming from, you know, diversify our funding as well and fill those gaps as we're doing that expansion.
For clarification on that, correct me if I'm wrong, because United Way of Southwest Virginia had, it was a different operating model, but it did not serve the city of Bristol because we have United Way of Bristol, which specifically served us. And that's why you didn't previously offer services here, and now you're independent of them, so.
Yeah, correct. So, the United Way system, the way it's built, it's very geographically different. And United Way of Southwest Virginia was a very different operating model than the United Way of Bristol. So, we had all of our own programs, which are programs that I just spoke about, and it got to the point where it didn't make sense to be a United Way anymore. They're still United Way of Southwest Virginia, but they're their own entity. And also, part of the reason of trying to grow the funding is as United Way, when we were Southwest Virginia, a big piece of that funding model was workplace campaigns. So, they've kept that. And we've created this whole other organization that's building an entirely different funding model, and so those funds, we don't have anymore.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Thank you. Okay. Next on the list is the Birthplace of Country Music, and I believe Melissa Roberts is here. Welcome, Melissa.
Thank you. Mayor Nevin, City Council, city staff, I appreciate the opportunity to come talk to you this evening about Birthplace of Country Music. A lot of you might know something about it, but I wanted to make sure that you knew the totality of it. I feel like Matt Bolis. I'm going to take a 50/50 chance here. That's the right way. Okay. So, the Birthplace of Country Music respectfully requests $50,000 in funding from the city of Bristol, Virginia for fiscal year 2026. And I will say, we have some exciting things. That will be the 25th year of the Bristol Rhythm and Roots Reunion. So, that's a really big celebratory year for us. You can see our mission here. The Birthplace of Country Music seeks to perpetuate, promote, and celebrate Bristol's rich musical heritage. I won't read it to you, but I want to say that it goes deeper than this. We hold in trust the Appalachian story that started with a collection of stories that were pressed in 1927. They went on to the hills and the hollers and pulled people who were picking on their porches and pressed it into a record, and that was the big bang of country music. We continue to hold that in trust to this day and give our young folks something to be proud of. For those who have been outside this region, sometimes the narrative is written for us, and so we contest that narrative because we have a rich and storied history here. So, we do have three branches at BCM. We have the Birthplace of Country Music Museum, which you all know. It is 10 years old. It's celebrated 10 years last year. We have Radio Bristol, which is celebrating its 10-year this year. And then we have the Bristol Rhythm and Roots Reunion, as I said, will celebrate 25 years next year. COVID kind of threw us off. Otherwise, it'd have been really cool to do it in '25. So, I want to talk about each of these branches and make sure that you have a holistic view of them. Radio Bristol has been programming on a low-watt FM radio over the air 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We also have digital that is online that you can listen to, that is broken down into various kinds, Americana, classic country. But we have listeners in all 50 states and 140 countries. The U.S. is our number-one listenership. Germany is a close second, interestingly enough. And we had some kids who came in from Clemson the other day that were from Egypt, and one of them grew up on country music and was super excited to tour our museum. Farm and Fun Time is a recreation of a WCYB program from years ago that we have rebuilt partnering with WCYB. We just revised a two-year coordination attempt with them. But Farm and Fun Time is available to more than 155 million people. And when you watch Farm and Fun Time on YouTube or PBS, you can see clearly in the background of everyone Bristol, because that's where we want people to come from. We had somebody come from Wyoming the other day because they had watched Farm and Fun Time on YouTube and wanted to visit Bristol. It is PBS, more than 143 PBS channels, and 80 markets air Farm and Fun Time through NIDA. We're getting ready to upload more, so there will be even more that are available. This is a video. I too wanted to show a video because I wanted to share the excitement that we create for Bristol. We'll be dropping on March 31st, so we expect there to be a real buzz about that because we've got a very cool lineup this year. But Bristol Rhythm and Roots Reunion has over 170 million combined audience through media. That's through Rolling Stone, Tennessean, Travel and Leisure, NPR, Saving Country Music, those publications. We also have been invited to submit our second, our second to Teen Vogue. So, we're going to be doing an article for Teen Vogue. We did an original one. This one goes along with our Women in Old-Time Music. So, we'll be featuring Dolly Parton and some of the other things. That is $16 million worth of advertising equivalency in combined media. So, we are bringing Bristol, you know, that's $16 million. We have a little under 20,000 festival attendees. We have actually invested this year in a program that's going to give us a much more accurate number. It's called Placer AI, that will be able to tell where people came to Bristol from, where they went when they were here, and where they left after they left the festival. So, we'll be able to share that with you all next year. We also have 5.2 million festival media impressions, and we have a $21.6 million economic impact from non-regional visitors. That is adjusted. Then we have our Birthplace of Country Music Museum, which is the shining gem of Bristol, Virginia. We have visitors from over 2,000 cities, all 50 states, 11 countries. We are now at pre-COVID levels with our bus tours that have come back and our school tours that have come back, so we worked really hard to do that. We're also a Smithsonian affiliate museum, and there are only a couple of those across the United States. We also do Museums for All, which is a program for people who might get SNAP benefits or WIC benefits, they get free and reduced access to the museum. So, it's a great thing for them to do with their kiddos. This, again, is the educational programs with the tours and the visits. We have speaker sessions. We have speaker sessions, square dances that sell out really quickly. I haven't square danced since fourth grade, to be honest with you all, but a lot of fun. We do a songwriter circle, a pick along summer camp jam, which is the junior Appalachian musicians. So we're really kind of focused on those kiddos and bringing them into the history of Bristol and into the history of Appalachia. You can see we do after-school programs for Bristol, Virginia Public Schools, teacher in-service training and adult education. And community pride, the perception that we have is the important thing that we create. So we have, if you have not been through the museum, I encourage you to do so, but we have kind of a green board. It's not a whiteboard, but people can write messages on there. And this is one of the messages from Ben Tally, which I think everybody here knows Ben Tally, that the museum makes him proud of his town and his heritage. And so we work to create that cycle of residence and tourism that create positive social impact. So when they leave Bristol after visiting BCM, they have a much different view of what Bristol is. Our economic impact cannot be ignored. And so Marcus McCall is the president and hotel developer for the Bristol Hotel. And he has told us time and again that the key factor in him building downtown was the BCM museum being downtown. So he took the Executive Plaza, which was in sad shape for those of you who don't know, and made a $20 million capital investment to build the Bristol Hotel Lumax Vivian's Table, which is, you know, hopping every Friday, Saturday, Sunday night. In addition, the Sessions Hotel, Hal Craddock said that the Birthplace of Country Music with its events and museum is the primary reason that he chose to locate in downtown Bristol. So really what we're bringing to Bristol along with others, but what we're bringing to Bristol cannot be ignored when we hear that from people who have made major economic investments in our town. Tourism, you know, we don't just sit around waiting for people to come to Bristol, although we like when they land in our lap. Our staff has attended motor coach conferences. We just got back from one in Philadelphia. We partner with organizations like Crooked Road, you heard Matt talk about AMA that we just got back from, so Explore Bristol. And we bring visitors from all over. We've had folks from Australia and Ireland and we're accessible to all. So we've had people who have come in who are, you know, deaf or hard of hearing and it doesn't impact them any less because we make sure that they're welcome. We welcome Bristol Motor Speedway and Hard Rock Casino visitors to downtown Bristol. We attended the VRLTA, which is the advocacy days where we talked about tourism in Bristol. We were part of that in Richmond. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but thank you all for your time, for your attention, and for your support of Birthplace of Country Music.
Thank you so much for that presentation and I just want to thank you for all the work that you all do for Bristol. I know you're out promoting the museum, but you also promote Bristol and I appreciate that. At the shows that you go to, I know you all do a lot of the, whether it's the bus tours or even like you were saying, advocacy day on the hill. You not only, you know, talk about the Birthplace of Country Music and that museum and the festival and Radio Bristol, but I've heard you all spill and thank you because you do represent Bristol and you sell Bristol, not only just the museum.
Thank you.
So I want to thank you for that. And you're right, how lucky and blessed we are to have a Smithsonian affiliated museum right here in our city. It is one of the most beautiful, great museums that I've ever been to. And I'm not just saying that because I'm the mayor of the city, but it is a fantastic museum. So, and I've been surprised at times how some of our own Bristolians have not been through it before. And it is such a wonderful place. So thank you for the work that you're doing. Thank you for putting on also a wonderful festival. Bristol Rhythm and Roots is talked about across the Commonwealth, but also through many other states as well, as it is a huge draw for this area. So thank you again for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
So I'll open it up to any other comments.
I'll just hop on that train there and thank you for all that you do. BCM is such a fantastic organization. All three branches do an amazing job. I remember when I first learned about the Sessions before the museum even opened, just the impact they had and just the way you all preserve that history, promote it and kind of bring it to the next generation is just incredible. So thank you for what you do.
And I'll just say that, you know, I remember being 12 years old at the Bristol Mall, which is now a casino, with a tiny museum in the corner of a very small storefront space. And not only how much the casino, how much the mall has changed, but oh my God, how much the museum has changed. You know, it is, I plug it to anybody that I talk to who's not from around here saying, we got a Smithsonian museum. Go check it out, go look at it. And it's really, it's incredible what you all do as far as not only tourism and marketing, bringing buses, bringing people, but also education for children in our area. Because we have a lot to be proud of in Southwest Virginia, Northeast Tennessee. And you have to rewrite the narrative sometimes and being proud of this part of our heritage is a very big, big aspect. So we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
I remember going to the old museum because it was right by KB Toys.
Exactly. It was in the corner, yep. All right. Thank you so much for being here tonight, Melissa. All right, next on the list is Feeding Southwest Virginia and I believe that Rachel is joining us via Zoom tonight.
Yes, ma'am. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Mayor Neve and Council, for the opportunity to present to you all today. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Great, okay. So I'm going to be telling you all a little bit more about Feeding Southwest Virginia. So we are a nonprofit organization that operates across 12,400 square miles of Southwest Virginia. We've got a picture here on the screen for you of our service area. You can see the map dot in Bristol, Salem, and our Community Solutions Center. Those are the three important tiers of our work. Altogether, that helps us oversee over, or nearly 400 partner feeding programs, which source, inspect, house, and distribute millions of pounds of nourishing food every year. The last fiscal year, we saved our neighbors about $34.4 million in grocery costs. All in all, we serve 26 counties and nine cities, including Bristol. So a little bit more about how our food banks work. We rely a lot on food donations, either ones that are given to us by the average person or governmental agencies such as the USDA. And retailers are a huge part of the food that we source. That will then make its way to our distribution center, either in Salem or in Abington, where the food is sorted and prepared and is then transported to our feeding partners to be served to neighbors in need. And as mentioned, those 394 feeding partner programs could look like soup kitchens, they could look like pantries, children's programs, hunger and health programs. We have a myriad of services we offer so that we can touch anyone experiencing food insecurity and meet them with a program that works best for them. So unfortunately, Southwest Virginia does experience a higher rate of food insecurity than Virginia. Our most recent data suggests that we are sitting at about 14.4 as opposed to Virginia's 11.11. I think a lot of the previous presentations we heard this evening touched on why that might be the case, whether it's due to negative health outcomes, which can absolutely affect food insecurity, a lack of employment or workforce ability. It all has a very cyclical effect and is contributing to a higher value. To touch more on that need, a total of 165,430 neighbors in Southwest Virginia are food insecure, which includes over 40,000 children. Looking at that in a different sense, one in five children are food insecure and the average individual of every seven is food insecure. And these values absolutely have a relationship with health. So what we're looking at here is the county health ranking and roadmap from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and their data on health outcomes and disparities in Virginia. So you can see from the map that the closer we get to the state lines, the more those health, negative health, health outcomes become more pronounced as well as food insecurity. So they absolutely have a role together and can usually increase the negative effects of one another. So I talked a lot about how food insecurity is very prevalent in Southwest Virginia as well as negative health outcomes, but we do a lot to try and help. So we have our wonderful feeding partners all across Southwest Virginia that serve neighbors in need. We also have a direct service program, those that are mobile, mobile marketplace and the mobile food pantry, that are really popular and help get food to neighbors in hard-to-reach locations, especially ones that are rural. We have amazing children's feeding programs. I'll touch on one of them a little bit later. Our summer feeding programs are huge and a very, very busy time of year, but super rewarding. We also have senior programs such as the Senior Box Kitting here in Salem and the Harvest Home Community Kitchen that really look out for seniors and elderly populations as those can be especially vulnerable to food insecurity as children are. We've also had an increased focus on hunger and health and how those two are correlated with one another. And that has been a big push for our organization as of the past three years to really focus on how to not only feed our neighbors, but nourish them. So looking at Bristol specifically, almost 3,000 neighbors here are food insecure or about 16 or 17% of the population. And 740 children are food insecure or more than a fifth of the population. So in Bristol, we do operate 16 partner programs, including Kids Farmers Markets, after-school programs, backpack programs, and food pantries to help. A little bit more about Bristol. In the last fiscal year, we distributed over 70,000 pounds of food to help at a value of 120,000 to help offset the costs of groceries that these neighbors would have had to buy otherwise. And this current fiscal year, we plan to spend 25,000 in Bristol. And we are seeking an allocation of 2,000 to help keep our work, keep our work efficient and effective in Bristol. And an allocation of 2,000 would create the equivalent of 4,000 meals for these neighbors in need. So we have a lot of wonderful community partnerships that make our work possible. This past fiscal year, almost 3,000 volunteers dedicated hours and hours of their time to our organization and helped pack food, sort it for quality distribution, pack it for backpack programs all across Southwest Virginia. We could not have done it without them. With the help of our community partners, we distributed almost 21 million pounds of food this past fiscal year and served an average of more than 114,000 neighbors every month. This past summer was one of our most successful summer feeding programs ever and we served over 20,000 meals to more than 9,000 children. So that was something we were really proud of and something that we could not have done without our partners. So that's something to look forward to if you were to help fund us this great network of different community partners that we really rely on and make our work possible. So I was glad to do this with you all. I had the fortune of visiting a Kids Farmers Market. This is just one of our children's programs, but it's definitely one of my favorites. This was hosted in Bristol by Girls Inc., if you're familiar. So every week they put on a Kids Farmers Market this time of year and I was able to snap some photos to document the process. On the left, we have volunteers setting up the produce. That day, they were kale, grapes, carrots, potatoes, ears of corn that the kids loved. And there's Howard in the middle, Howard Chafin, our representative for children's programs down in Abington, discussing with the kids what to expect, how they're going to move through in line. And he's also going to be distributing our food bank bucks, which are just a form of fake currency that helps the kids learn math skills. Sometimes they have to split the bills if they get a $5 bill. It also gives them early skills of budgeting. So not only are they experiencing a farmer's market style experience and associating healthy food with fun and community, but they're also getting some more holistic skills of financial literacy. So on the right is a picture of a young girl looking very excited. I think something was cheaper than she thought it was going to be, so she got to have a bit more than she expected. But that's just one of the things we do in Bristol to create a sense of community while also addressing high food insecurity needs. Okay, my last thing here, we have plenty of volunteer opportunities available. This past fiscal year, 2,668 volunteers helped us out in both Salem and Abington or in our feeding kitchens, which are very well-run, very efficient, and a lot of fun. Our neighborhood pantry, which is located, it's within this Community Solutions Center in Roanoke, that's located in an area of high need and they have a great family of volunteers there. Quality assurance, both in Abington and Salem, to make sure that the food is not dented, not spoiled, within expiration, safe to consume, all of those good things. Box kitting, which is also a really fun volunteer opportunity. That's great. We usually get big teams like Delta Dental in, who will make it a bonding event for work while getting to kit boxes for seniors in need. And we do about 2,000 of those every month. So it's definitely one of our more popular programs. Our mobile programs are wonderful. We have a great team and many volunteers, as well as our kids' food truck, which everyone tries to volunteer for. So that might not be, have as many opportunities available, but that one's wonderful. That also gives underserved children an opportunity to experience what ordering at a mobile food truck might look like if they are unable to afford, you know, the more popular food trucks that have become pretty prevalent, pretty prevalent recently, that can give them an opportunity to experience that for themselves, as well as warehouse assistance. We do have volunteer opportunities within the warehouse. So if you're looking at this presentation and interested in not only learning more about us, but contributing, we would love to have you. We have two volunteer coordinators, one in Abington and one in Salem. So you're just welcome to get in touch and we can, we can get you scheduled. But that is all that I have for you today. Thank you for listening and do you have any questions?
Thank you so much for that presentation. That was fantastic and the numbers are staggering at how many people you feed through that process and year to year. So thank you so much. I think also in thinking about $2,000 equals 4,000 meals, that's amazing too. But the work that you do in our community is important and we appreciate you all so much. I'll open it up for any other comments or questions.
I was thinking, we often think in terms of return on investment and just dollar-wise, a $2,000 ask when they're planning to spend 25,000 in Bristol.
I just want to say thank you, Rachel, and to the team at Feeding Southwest Virginia. Y'all do an amazing job. I've been able to visit your Abington location a couple of times and just seeing the work that you all do is phenomenal. And I got to visit one of the kids' farmer markets, farmers markets as well, and it was pretty cool to see those kids get excited about getting fruits and veggies and like you said, learning the budgeting skills and things like that. So just thank you for all, all the programming that you all do and just all the great impact you have. We appreciate it.
All right. Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me and thank you for listening. Have a great rest of the evening.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to take a break. And so this meeting will now stand in recess for 10 minutes. for 10 minutes. Let's have a break.
All right, this meeting is back in session. We are now on number three of the regular agenda, supplemental appropriation of 438,813. And no one has signed up for public comments, and I'm going to ask Team Russ Bradlin for a report.
Thank you. Mayor Nate and members of council, this item is a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $438,813, excuse me, for general fund appropriations. City Attorney to appropriate beginning balance funds for professional services related to outside legal fees in the amount of $320,000. Police Department to appropriate the proceeds of items sold to operating supplies and materials in the amount of $1,837. To appropriate recovered costs received for overtime expenditures in the amount of $11,000. To appropriate insurance proceeds received to be expended on repairs in the amount of $10,313. Fire Department Grants to appropriate grant monies to be expended in fiscal year 2025. Hazmat appropriations of $10,992. Heavy tactical rescue expenditures in the amount of $46,600. Hazardous materials emergency to appropriate grant monies to be expended in fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $12,151. Judicial alternative sentencing program to appropriate grant monies to be expended in the current fiscal year. Specialty docket grant expenditures of $10,080. And drug court sustainability grant appropriations in the amount of $15,840. And council staff recommends that the budget amendment be approved as listed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We are looking for a motion?
I move for approval of the supplemental appropriation as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any council discussion?
I'm excited that the fire department's getting all these grants.
Yep.
I do have a question just for clarification purposes for the public. The $320,000 for legal fees, for outside legal fees, and that's related to landfill, correct?
Yes, it's related to ongoing legal fees associated with the landfill. It is coming from beginning balance funds.
Thank you.
All right, with no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nate.
Yes. All right, item number four, request for variance from city code 50-582, off-street parking requirements. No one has signed up for public comment, and looking for staff report from Jay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Staff has received a request for a variance from the off-street parking requirements in section 50 hyphen 582 of the city code from the Bristol redevelopment and housing authority. The housing authority is planning to construct a new housing development on Moore Street where they will build eight duplexes, providing a total of 16 new residential units. You can see highlighted on Moore Street, the area where these duplexes will be constructed. Just kind of a rough site plan that they've done to show the layout of the property. These are the floor plans. It's kind of hard to read from here, but this is the information that was provided. I thought I'd go ahead and make it available. And then just kind of the outside, just a drawing of what they're going to look like. So these are to be similar to the Sapling Grove duplexes that are situated on Clinton Avenue. Section 50 hyphen 582 B1 states that there shall be two off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit, which for the proposed development would mean 32 off-street parking spaces. Because of the size and layout of the property, the residential units, the housing authority is requesting that they be permitted to develop the property with 16 parking spaces, so that would be one per residential unit. I've attached to your packet, to the staff, a justification letter from Mr. Rich Pennell, the Development Director of the Housing Authority, and a copy of the site plan, which I had up here for you. Mr. Pennell is not available today. He ended up having to go out of town. We do have Lisa Porter from the Housing Authority. And I'll just touch on a couple of the points in the justification letter that Mr. Pennell submitted to us. Basically, again, there'd be eight duplexes with 16 units. With many, he goes on to state that with many of their building projects, maximizing the number of units while working within the constraints of limited land presents challenge. In this instance, providing the required two parking spaces per unit would reduce the number of units that they can offer, and that they respectfully request the variance to the zoning requirement. They do have some explanation that based on their experiences with providing housing of this type, they do not believe that two spaces per unit would be used. They make a point that at their development at Sapling Grove, which is located just a block away, this development includes 26 residences in 13 duplexes, and they've only issued parking permits for 22 of those residents. And that right there would have required 52 parking spaces. So based on the, you know, just the type of housing they're providing and the location, I did reach out to members of staff to get some comments on this before the meeting. And the only person I heard from, Jake Chandler, the Public Works Director, stated that the city is considering removing parking from Moore Street, either one side or both sides. This is not something that we're looking to do tomorrow, but it is a potential for the future. So it would perhaps eliminate some of the on-street parking that they would have there. However, Mr. Chandler does go on to state that he has no issues with the variance request. As I mentioned, Lisa Porter is here, and she can answer any questions if you do have any, but staff does recommend that city council grant the parking variance.
All right, thank you. Before we get into discussion, I'll look for a motion?
So move. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. So we'll move into council discussion. So I guess the main thing is, we know that based on other residents and the number of parking spaces allowed, if it follows suit with that, there would be plenty of parking even with only having, what was it, 16?
Right, one per residential unit, so yes, so 16.
Yeah, okay. And so based on that, you all feel very confident about that? And I'll just, Lisa, I know you're here, thank you for clarifying that.
We do feel very confident about that, yes.
Okay. And just being the devil's advocate on it, what if, what if we do not have enough spaces? Do we have a Plan B for it?
Even though we're asking the variance to only require one spot per dwelling unit, we do have plans that call for more than that. I think we'll actually be about six or seven spots short, so we will have more than 16.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I do have.
Go ahead.
Okay, so if I'm correct, so there are 16 units, right?
Yes.
So, and of the 16, it looks like four of them are two-bedroom, and then everything else is one-bedroom.
Correct.
So realistically, a lot of these one-bedroom units might end up being rented to maybe senior citizens, maybe, maybe even young single people. So they wouldn't necessarily have two cars if it's just one person living there, and if they're an older person, they might not have any cars.
That's what we typically see.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I have a question for city manager, Mr. Chandler, whomever. I know Mr. Dietrich mentioned we might remove parking on Moore Street. What's the parking situation right now on Buchanan and Clinton?
As far as the parking on Buchanan and Clinton, I believe it's one side only. I'd have to double-check that, but I'm just going from memory.
So but they do have parking on both of those streets?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so theoretically, if everybody in these duplexes all threw a Christmas party at the same time, they could park on the road somewhere.
Right, yeah.
So I know we have talked about this before, and I vague on a few details, and I just want a clarification. I think at one point, you mentioned another one of the properties nearby having additional spots that could be used, but it couldn't be used in the application. Is that correct?
Yes, we would rather not use that other lot, but if we had to, we could use the other lot for parking.
Okay.
But it's actually a corner of what used to be VI.
Okay.
That we now, that would not be our preference.
Understood. Thank you for that.
I like having all the details available in the packet, the apartment layouts, the profiles. I really like having those details because you can see a big picture of exactly what's being planned here. I like the idea that low-income residents don't necessarily have to live in a place that looks industrial. It's a place that's doubtless intended to be sturdy, durable for the long term, but it looks nice, and I like that. I appreciate having those details.
Thank you. Our goal is to make all of our housing attractive to the neighborhoods that they're in as we proceed with redeveloping and building.
Aside from the parking, I believe these units are one-level units?
They are one-level. You know, there's a high demand for one-level units.
I think that's great that there are, there'll be more one-level units.
We're an aging population, and we need more one-level units.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nate.
Yes. And thank you so much, Lisa, for being here tonight and answering our questions. Yep. All right, moving to item number five, approval of a letter of recommendation to the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation from the city council for a micro-transit demonstration project. No one has signed up for public comments, and I'm coming back to Mr. Dietrich.
Thank you. Before I go into the letter, I just want to just do a quick presentation here about micro-transit. I know the majority of the council were either involved or notified, maybe sat in on some of the stakeholder meetings when our consultants were down here doing the micro-transit study. The study has been completed, so now it's like, okay, what are we going to do with it? So I'm just going to hit some of the highlights of what the study said. I'll go through the demonstration grant real quick. So basically, just a few of the questions in here. So what is micro-transit? Some of the recommendations and cost estimates that were here. I took out the potential funding sources for now because we are using the demonstration grant that I'll just mention briefly. So the study was funded by the city of Bristol, Virginia with a match from the Department of Rail and Public Transportation. The feasibility study assesses the potential integration of micro-transit service into our existing transit operations, and it would complement, not replace, our demand response in fixed route service. Just a reminder, we have three fixed transit routes in the city. They run approximately 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, except for the East Bristol Route, which only, which runs four hours fewer. Paratransit service is provided with Bristol, Virginia's Transit Service Area. What the paratransit service is, you get, if you have a disability, you would get certified from a local physician, and then you could call for a ride. You'd get picked up, they'll take you somewhere, and then they'll go pick you up when it's Basically, the route map of our transit, the one I believe in purple on the east side of Bristol, that is the East Bristol Route, that's the one that we are mainly talking about here today. As you see, it goes King Mill Pike, Old Airport Road, Bonham Road. It does kind of end there at the Bonham Road Food City, comes back around Old Airport Road as on his way back towards the Downtown Transfer Center. So what is micro-transit? In a nutshell, micro-transit is very similar to Uber or Lyft, only for public transportation. So we would establish a service zone area in which people who reside in that area could call or use an app or any other way that we can come up with to request a ride, basically. So instead of having a fixed route service that goes the same route every single hour for the entirety of the day, you would be able to request that ride. So some of the benefits, you have a more responsive service with a shorter wait time. You can schedule your trips when you need them, and you get improved access to some of these services that take place within that micro-transit zone because it widens out the area of service. The challenge is, you know, it's going to require some additional resources at least upfront. There are, the changes, any change is a little difficult, so there's going to be some adjustment period. And, you know, we're going to have to find ways besides just having an app for a smartphone because not everybody does have a smartphone. So if you can see the shaded area, this area would be the micro-transit zone for the East Bristol area. So anybody who lives within this area could call and request a ride to go to somewhere else in this shaded area. Or they could be taken to the Downtown Transfer Center, and they could transfer to one of the regular routes, either the route that goes to Walmart or the route that goes to Kroger Casino area. As you see, though, there are quite a few places where this transit zone intersects with some of our existing routes, so there is always the possibility where we could drop them off, and then they could just pick it up so they wouldn't have to take the ride all the way downtown. And those are things that we would work out in the planning stage. And some of that would also depend on when they're making that call, when they're going to get that ride. And, you know, those are things that we would have to work out, but it does, as you see, widen the area. It also includes the new elementary school, primary school up there, so right now, we don't have a route that goes there. So it kind of expands that service area. There was also a request for a pilot program for weekend and evening service, and this was the micro-transit zone for that. We did not apply for the grant for that right now. We figure one step at a time. The one that we need the most is the East Bristol Route. But this is a possibility down the line if things were to go well. So as you see, the expanded, the middle column, the expanded recommendation, the service area size is just under five square miles and would serve approximately 8,400 people. 16% of that is low-income, and 10% of those have no vehicles at all in their home. In this expanded area, we have social services, we have government offices, primary care, not hospital, of course, but health clinics in this area, laundromats, libraries, groceries. So we do have a lot of things in that area, the expanded area that people would maybe want to go to. Right now, there just aren't a lot of attractions in that East Bristol Route to drive ridership. So our cost estimates on this, so this is just kind of the first thing that would show us your annual weekdays, your annual operating hours, about 4,000 annual operating hours running the same timeframe. They believe that this would be a ridership range annually of somewhere around 3,000 to 8,500 riders. The annual operating cost would be $190,000. Software costs each year would be $54,000. This, however, was based on using three vehicles, equipping three vehicles with that software. We believe that two would be sufficient, so we would take $18,000 off that. I just haven't had a chance to adjust some of these numbers. The annual operating savings is what we project that we spend on that route now, just running that bus. So you kind of have to deduct that from what we're going to go up to. So the annual operating cost would be somewhere around $150,000 minus one of those softwares, that $18,000, so you're looking at $130,000 basically, addition to what we have now. And I do believe that some of these numbers might, they feel a little bit high, but we don't know unless we do it, of course. There's a one-time setup and installation fee on some of these softwares. We don't have to purchase a vehicle because we did purchase a new van that we would use for micro-transit service. We don't believe we would have to use one of the larger cutaway buses that we have. We could use a smaller 10-passenger van, which would, of course, cut down on some of our operating expenses. Each one of these would be equipped with tablets because it would help them, you know, the drivers have to know where to pick, where to pick people up. They'd have their app, and that's how it would work. Or if there was a call-in service, you know, we'd have to dispatch from downtown to the van. Some promotional activities. So the total capital costs there were about $53,000 to go along with the $150,000 that were shown earlier with the operating cost. And even though I mentioned it may be a little bit, we think it might be a little lower, I went ahead and applied for the funds for the higher amount just in case. The potential funding sources, and this is where we come back, the Department of Rail and Public Transportation has what's called a demonstration grant that assists transit agencies when they want to start a new project or start a new service. And it will pay for 80% of the expenses, operating capital, everything, for a period of up to two years. And so what it does, it will help a transit system maybe try something that they were not able to do under normal budgetary constraints because they don't have the money. And, you know, there's a lot of reporting, there's a lot of milestones to meet and goals, but we feel, felt that this was the best first step when it came to applying for funds, to try to put a demonstration program for this micro-transit. So the city has applied for an amount of $203,000 to assist in funding this route. If approved by the state, the grant would fund 80% of the amount, so $162,400 for the first year to year and a half is what I estimate before, because it wouldn't, we would not be able to hit the ground running right on July 1. You know, we've got to acquire some things, we've got to educate the public. So it's probably looking at about a year and a half, more than just a year. As I mentioned, the purpose is to lessen the initial cost of implementing a new project while its feasibility is under evaluation. A letter of support from the city council would strengthen the application and show the DRPT that the city is willing to look at innovative solutions to increase service and ridership. I did attach the study to your packet. It's rather lengthy, and it goes into a lot of detail. This was, this was something that when the transit system updated our transit development plan that was recommended that we look into, and as I mentioned, we got some funding from the state to help us to do this feasibility study. And it should also be noted that the 20% that the city would be responsible for, some of that would be recovered through our FTA grants as normal operating cost at a 50% match rate. So staff recommends approval of the letter of recommendation that is attached to your packet. And I can take any questions that anybody might have.
All right, thank you. I'm looking for a motion before we move into council discussion.
I move for approval of the letter of recommendation as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any council discussion?
Since we're currently experiencing some costs with the east route, and we have to cover 20% of the project versus the state's 80%, will we actually effectively potentially be saving money with this grant, at least for the short period of the trial?
It is possible. It just depends on the total overall operating cost. It's going to be, you know, as I mentioned, we're going to be able to use a smaller vehicle. It's not going to be just running on the route all the time if there isn't a call. So you do have the potential for some savings as far as that goes as well.
Which could, if this goes longer, could make it a little more sustainable because we can put our short-term savings into extending the program after the grants expire.
Right, and that's what the hope is, giving us that money from the state to help us find that out.
It seems to meet with the current route numbers on the east route, that this seems to be an intelligent alternative that will both reduce costs and improve service both at the same time. Looks like a very good opportunity to test something out that we don't necessarily have to pay for the whole thing ourselves.
I did want to ask, is this kind of, this is a very vague question, but is this kind of like the future transit, like micro-transit? Other localities, are they doing that?
There are, it's becoming a lot more popular. There are quite a few localities in Virginia that have switched to this, at least on a limited scale, kind of like what we're doing. I believe the only one that I'm aware of that went full micro-transit was Winchester, Virginia. I don't, it's just, they haven't been doing it for too long, so I doubt they have a lot of numbers yet as far as that goes. But, yeah, it's something that, you know, with people becoming familiar with rideshare, and it's not something that I think is that strong. rideshare, and it's not something that I think is that strange to people anymore that you would call and ask somebody for a ride. And, you know, if the transit can provide that, then we should be looking at doing that, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is great. I mean, there is, there is a stigma associated, I guess, with riding the bus, you know, and people might not want to do that. So this gives people who need to get to work outside of certain times, maybe they can't get the bus or don't want to get the bus, it gives them a good opportunity. I know, I was looking, I was looking through the packet, and I did see a discussion with a couple people that were interviewed about their thoughts. It was Beth Reinhardt from the Chamber and Melanie Fleener from District 3, and Andrea Birchfield. And they were all talking about, like, the price point that we would charge users of the service.
Right. And that's not something that has quite yet been determined. I think the belief is that it would be a little bit higher than the $1 right now, but what that number is, it was not something that they gave us as a recommendation.
Well, I can, I can, I can give you a recommendation. I had, we've been here for seven hours, I'm going to tell you a personal story. My car was recently in the shop for about three weeks. Everything broke, and then as soon as that fixed, everything else on it broke. And I was using Uber heavily to go to Food City, to go wherever. And a ride from my house, which is not far from downtown, to Food City at exit 7, which was a little bit closer, was like $13 to $15 one way, and then $13, $15 back. So, you know, if you're, if you're in that $4, $3, $5 price range, you're more than competitive with the only other option that people have right now, like Uber and Lyft. You're much, you're very competitive with those prices, much lower than those prices. And my only concern is that once people hear about this program, they're going to use it a lot. And we're going to end up having to, we might have to expand it because it ends up being so popular.
Right. And that's why we would primarily use one bus or one van. We do have a, an older van that was just replaced for another use that could be used as a backup, or perhaps one of our other spare buses. Instead of getting rid of it, you know, we could use it in case we need a second one. That's, that's why I would like to make sure that we had the software and the tracking and everything on at least two of our vehicles to start with.
Would this not require additional staff?
Not this one route. We believe that we could use it with the exact same people we have right now, because we do have people dedicated to that East Bristol route now. They would just be driving this. We are also down a part-time driver. If we could get somebody hired for that, that would also assist.
Okay.
But the hours would be the same as where they are now, so we wouldn't have to have anybody staying any later or coming in any earlier. If it worked out well, we went to the weekend or the evening service, then you're definitely looking at additional staffing. But we think we can run this one with the existing staffing levels.
For the weekend and evening service, I would imagine, once we're able to try that out, that would be part of our highest demand, I think. Because a lot of the people who maybe can't afford a car, have to work weekends or nights, they need that ride on the weekends. So that would, that may be very good. Correct me if I'm wrong, the town of Avondale, I know the town of Avondale partners with District 3 for their bus service. They have, not a microtransit, but like a paratransit system currently where you can call and schedule rides at specific times.
Right. The majority of their routes are like that. They're demand response, so you call and you schedule it. And, and that's kind of what we would be doing as well for this one.
And they've had good success with it.
Yeah, they, they have. I mean, they have a lot of rural areas that translate better to the demand response than, say, maybe some of the urban. But with the, with all the new technology that is, and how, you know, we'd use, just like a rideshare service, we feel that something like this is available and will work in this type of, maybe not overly urban, but, you know, urban as far as Bristol is concerned.
It's almost like on a very limited scale, it's like a, like a city-owned taxi service, almost.
Yeah. And I think we also, I mean, we have Uber, Lyft, those things, but they're very limited. We don't have them, like, if you're looking for Uber or Lyft, you can't always find one, I have found. And so, we've talked a lot about, especially like shuttle services or something like that. So, I think this would be an opportunity to fill a void that we have in the city and for people who maybe don't have the technology to order an Uber or order something like that. So I do like the idea of having some way, either it's a call, a dispatch, something other than having it to where it's on the phone. Because I picture maybe even some elderly people needing to use this to get to appointments or something, and they do not have access to an app, or, you know, they're not familiar with how to use that.
Right.
So, there's a, I feel like there's a need to have that to where they could call in.
And that's our plan, you know, and we have a lot of experience in doing that anyway with our demand response with the paratransit system. So it's, it's something that we usually, that we do on a regular basis.
Okay.
Is there concern that with the new option, we may wind up with, as seemed like may have been alluded to here, there could be a tremendous increase in demand? And as such, we may find that those who have greater need of a low-income service may find themselves squeezed out by people who are using it because it's available. Is there concern that we may need to evaluate during this pilot period exactly how much it costs so that we may need to increase costs to cover ourselves so that we can then expand as necessary? And perhaps, I'm not sure how it would work, but have some arrangement whereby we can still take care of those who need a economic alternative as well?
Well, the last thing we want to do is price anybody out of being able to use the transit system, and that's not our intent. You know, it's not, transit's not a moneymaker, it's a public service that we provide. So, you know, we're not looking to, to make money and, and turn a profit necessarily on it. We know that it might have to come up a little bit for the service. But, you know, this demonstration time period that we'll have will give us the opportunity to, okay, maybe this rate is not exactly right, it might give us, we might have to adjust that right even during that period. So, those are things that we would be looking at.
I will say, Mr. Pollard, to your point, one, you know, the business of government is not business. And we've, we've fallen into that trap as a city before you or I were in office. You know, the business of government is helping people and doing good things when you can. And, you know, this, this is a good thing, I think. I think it's very good, and I think it will help you.
All right. With no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
All right. Item number six, Euclid Avenue, state of good repair allocation. No one has signed up for public comment. And staff report by Jake.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council. So typically, every year, the city will get a state of good repair allocation from VDOT, which allows us to pave streets without having to use our state maintenance budget. We've talked to VDOT over the past few months, and it's highly likely they're going to award us the Euclid Avenue resurfacing project from Chester to Commonwealth. And if we get awarded this SGR in June, we have until July of next year to get the resurfacing completed. Now, in advance of the resurfacing project, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. There's new stormwater systems that need to be installed, curb and gutter's got to be rebuilt, and the sidewalk's got to be rebuilt. So I presented this presentation a little over a year ago, and I'm really looking for some direction at this point because I really got to start working on the project in order to meet VDOT's deadlines. So if y'all had any thoughts on how we want to proceed with the Euclid Avenue cross-section?
Yep. Thank you. I know we had had a discussion about putting together a committee of residents along Euclid Avenue to have some input on it. And so, I think that is something that I would still like to see done. I'm not sure how we go about selecting them, or asking for their signups, but that is something I think would be important in this.
I have a question for you or the city manager, either one. On the, on the committee, I know we had, we talked about the committee, have we tried to get people to sign up and we didn't have any luck? Is that what happened?
I think previously, when this first came about, I think we had asked for people to sign up, but I would have to go back and double-check. I'm not 100% sure if we actually asked if people signed up. I can tell you, we didn't have anybody, I know we talked about a committee, we didn't have anybody calling saying, you know, can I join the committee? So we didn't have that.
I would really, I agree with the mayor. I would really like to see that. And I know we need to do these projects, and it's, in my mind, very clear what we need to do to do them. But I think it is very important to have several citizens who live on Euclid, not even just in the neighborhood, but on Euclid, be, you know, be stakeholders in this and be a part of this discussion. So they not only understand for themselves and have a say in it, but can also take the message of what we're doing and why we're doing it back to all their neighbors who might not be civically engaged.
And I'm just wondering, too, I want to say, when we discussed it before, we might have just put it on our website or something about it, but I think we're going to have to take it a step further, whether it's sending a letter to the folks on Euclid Avenue, including it in something that we send out. I think it's, we're going to have to take it a step further because what will happen is, if we do not reach them and get that input, but then we're over there starting to cut down some trees and fix the sidewalks and that kind of thing, then we're going to have a lot of people reaching out to us upset, and I certainly want them to be part of that conversation.
I would, I would much rather, as you said, I would much rather people know what's happening and be upset than to not know what's happening and be surprised and upset.
Yes.
Even if we create a committee and they only meet once, at least that way, we have done our due diligence to communicate with people, and they know exactly, at least those who are on the committee know what's going on. Even if they, it turns out that they had no concerns with it, then we can then move forward, knowing that we're acting in, with the understanding of the citizens.
I think overall, though, I think that repairing and renewing Euclid Avenue is great. I think this will make, it'll, it'll make Euclid Avenue safer, it'll make our streets safer, we're able to clean the roads up. You know, I think it'll, it'll make things better in the long run, but I do think that in the interim, in the short period, it will cause some unhappiness. But, you know, I think, I think it's very important that we have a group of citizens who are affected directly by this to just see this presentation in a room and hear their ideas.
No, I agree with you. And I think if you look at the pictures that we have here and see the damage that's being done by the trees to the sidewalks and the curbside, we also got to think about making sure it's ADA compliant. And so, when you have places that, some of these areas I'm looking at in the sidewalks, it would be very dangerous, actually. So, I'll open it up, too. Does anyone else have any comments about it?
Just, I'm all for the citizen committee to get thoughts of residents that are on Euclid, especially right there on Euclid. As far as this project itself, I remember last time we were talking a little bit about how it could be done, the sidewalks would maybe be wider, some trees would come out. And I'm, just to reiterate, I'm a big fan of that stretch that's in between the curb and the sidewalk, which is mostly a stretch of grass now, which is where the trees are. And I found myself, when I drive down Euclid, trying to envision what it's like without any trees. And I think it would certainly change the look of the street quite a bit. Obviously, I love the, the dogwoods in the middle, but I'm thinking about on the sides where the sidewalk is. And, of course, those are the trees that have caused the issues with the roots with the sidewalk. So, trying to figure out if there's some way to still preserve the look of it where there's not only trees down the middle of Euclid, but also on the sides.
On the, on the sides, it'd be very difficult to maintain that look, because if you rebuild the sidewalk to be ADA compliant, and the face of sidewalks back a curb, sidewalk's got to be six foot wide. So there's not a lot of rideaway there to work with. There might be a little bit left on the backside of the sidewalk, but there's certainly not enough on the face of the sidewalk side.
What I'm going to pitch might be too expensive, but I know you and I were talking about, let's say the sidewalk was six feet. And so that essentially eliminates that stretch between the sidewalk and the street. And we talked about the parking. If we left the parking, and so the lanes were the same size, and everything just sort of shifted to the center, so there could still be a six-foot sidewalk, maybe a two-foot strip of grass with trees, the lane, maybe the median ended up being a couple feet more narrow, where there's still grass and trees down the middle.
If you did that, you're most likely going to lose parking on either one or both sides of Euclid Avenue. So that is, that is an option. But, you know, we need to figure out, do people value the parking more than the trees? And try and figure out a path forward on that.
I think getting, getting that committee together, that'll help us drill down on that. I think, Mr. Eads, can we, how do we reach people better on this? Can we send out letters? Is that something that's possible?
I'm actually shooting an email to my assistant and to Rick at the moment to get together an online application. We can link that to Facebook, Twitter, other places, and we'll make sure that it's people who reside on Euclid Avenue, whether it's the north side or south side of Euclid, to be members of the committee. And I think no more than seven members would be appropriate. You know, you can get a committee too big, but I'll leave that up for you all as to how many you think we should have.
I think seven would be good. Mr. Chandler, what's, I know you said we're, we need to move on this soon to meet the requirements. What's the timeline that you need to meet?
The sooner the better, because that is a long stretch of roadway from Chester to Commonwealth to get ready for paving.
Well, like, when, when would you have to start on? What's the drop dead date?
I'd say this summer at the very late, very latest.
Okay. So if we were, say, if we were to set this up by, like, May?
Actually, I'm going to have applications due March 21st.
Okay.
We'll have the committee meet sometime, hopefully before April 1st, do a presentation form that you all have seen previously, let them know, you know, what we're trying to do. And I'm going to ask for a member of VDOT to be here as well to explain, you know, the significance of, of the project and the purpose of the project and what we need to do to comply with the state of good repairs money.
What would you think about having just a public, open discussion? If we were here between, I'm just saying, 6:00 and 8:00 on a Monday night, that they, they could come in and see what we're doing? We could put it up, kind of like we did the comprehensive plan, and people give input? Or, but we want to make sure that it's going to be folks that live also on Euclid Avenue that are being affected. I don't know if we would have time to do something like that, but then we would make sure that if they wanted to have a voice heard on it, they could share that. And then, my second part of this, the question would be, is this also affecting the median area, the dogwoods?
There are some dead or dying dogwoods that we would need to replace, and we may have to narrow that up. That was an option we were looking at, especially toward the Commonwealth side, narrowing that up a little more to give us some more room to work.
So under that scenario, theoretically, you could, I don't know how, I don't know how wide the median is, but you could narrow, you could knock two feet off on either side?
I don't know if we could knock two off both sides.
You could knock some amount of...
Some amount off both sides.
Or then maybe, in theory, you could keep the parking, or no?
It depends where you want the sidewalk. If we're talking about moving the curb and the sidewalk out toward the median, the parking's going to have to go. There's not going to be enough room to do that.
Okay.
Not unless we significantly narrow up that median, which I don't think is possible to keep all the trees, because there's various utilities that run through there, and that's why you see the trees are staggered a little bit to avoid the utilities.
I, I think for me, just speaking for myself, I... I think for me, just speaking for myself, I think the biggest priority on this is probably the dogwoods themselves in whatever shape or form, the ones that need to be replaced. I think we need to do that as part of this. And just because that is, that is a war memorial there that was created long before I was even considered as a human. But like it just, it has a lot of significance there. So I think whatever, what do we do going forward? I think we need to keep that a focus.
Make sure that's preserved.
Yeah.
Yes, I agree with that.
Mayor, real quick, in regards to your public hearing, I think it would be wise to probably get the committee together first.
Okay.
And then have a conversation with the committee in a smaller, more controlled scale.
Yes.
And then we look at having a public hearing sometime later, probably in mid to late April.
When you all are saying public hearing, you mean like an open house?
Just an open house, not a public, not a public hearing, but just a?
The committee can kind of put together maybe a couple of ideas that we could research and kind of put forward and have it before the open house or something like that.
And I would recommend that we would hold the open house somewhere in that neighborhood. Like maybe we could talk to you.
At the church.
Baptist Church or something.
Yeah.
Use their fellowship hall. So you're right there in the middle of?
That'd be good.
The neighborhood.
Would you perhaps be able to put together a sketch of Euclid with the proposed layout? That way they can see exactly what you're talking about?
We could definitely put something together.
The pictures that we've seen are mostly of the problems rather than of the proposed layout. And I think that would probably be helpful.
Okay.
All right. Does that give you what you need?
Yeah, sure does.
Okay. Okay. So I have on here a vote. Is this something we need to vote on?
No, you don't need to vote.
I was going to say, okay. This is more of a discussion. Thank you. Because I was like, what are we going to be voting on?
I will later. No, you need it now. I think. Sorry.
All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of a special events application. No one has signed up for public comment and looking for staff report from Jay.
Okay, thank you again, Madam Mayor, Mayor of the Council. Actually, I don't have a presentation for this one. I've included all the documents there in your staff report. And I do want to start here by saying that the lion's share of this work was performed by our special events coordinator, Debbie Denny. She was unable to be here tonight. So I just want to make sure that she, you know, how much she's, how hard she's worked on putting something like this together and all the different things we've had to sit down and discuss when it comes to this. You know, special events are a big part of Bristol, especially the downtown area. And we've always prided ourselves on being very special event friendly. However, we don't, we've never had a list of written and approved policies. I don't think we need to necessarily go to something like an ordinance that Bristol, Tennessee has done. But I think it helps staff when we have something that's written down and a procedure that you can follow and that the city council has kind of signed off on. So it gives us that ability to tell people, you know, this is, these are the rules, these are the regulations, and this is how, you know, we do things here when it comes to special events. So the, we have created a special events application that just kind of gives just some basic information. What's the event? Where it is, where is it? What type of event? You know, how many people are going to be there? And what we envision is this event, so it's going to be, you know, we'll have it in electronic form on our website. If you say yes, we're going to close the street, what that'll do then is it'll trigger another application, another forum that has to be done. You can see it's kind of like a street closure request application. This request would go, it'd be sent to Debbie. And then with, once we get all the documents, it would go to Public Works for evaluation. It would go to Fire for evaluation. It would go to Police. It'd come to Community Development Planning and then eventually would be approved by City Manager. This is kind of their permit. As part of this, we've included, we've developed a few rules and regulations for what you have to do if you want to request a street closure. We're giving 90 days that you have to notify us ahead of time because as you know, City Council is the only body that can approve the street closure. So sometimes we have to sit down as a staff and figure out the best way to work it, especially on new events. Older events, you know, we have a pretty good handle on, but there's always so many newer events. So we want to make sure that everybody who's looking at this can say, all right, we're asking you to notify everybody on your street closure area that this event is going to take place. You know, that doesn't necessarily mean that one person says, no, we don't like it, that we're not going to have the event. It's just everybody needs to be aware of that. You know, and it'll give you some rules and regulations as to what happens once the street is closed. We're not going to let you move vehicles around within a closure area. You can't bring new things in and out as far as that's concerned. So these are rules and regulations that we kind of do now, but we want to make sure that they are written down and part of a policy. As you see, we also have our special beverage application. So if you are going to serve alcohol at one of your events on city property or city right of way, this is a form that we already require. So if you mark on the special events application that you're going to serve alcohol, then you also are forced to fill out this form too, to get all the approvals. So you won't be able to submit an incomplete application and actually have it submitted. And you'll have all the documents that you need because the majority of the events that we do have that this would trigger are street closures. And a large portion of them do have beer gardens or beverage gardens of some kind. So this kind of gets all that information out to the applicant, especially if they're not used to doing something like this. You know, organizations like Birthplace of Country Music and Believe in Bristol, they're, they know what they're doing. They know what you have to submit. So having this, we think is going to make things a lot easier, not only for the applicant, but for staff. We also have our Cumberland Square Park rental application. As you know, people rent Cumberland Square Park all the time for, they usually use the stage. There's a lot of, this summer, a lot of gospel singing, a lot of things like that that are down there. You know, we've had the Tri Pride event. We have Rhythm and Roots there. So it's a big part of our downtown. So this is an application that already exists, but we just kind of updated it, made it a little easier to read. There are a few fees associated with it and those are in here as well. We've also added some rules, the reservation procedures, some rules and regulations that you have to follow. And we're in the process of getting some more signs to go down there with rules and regulations and making sure that we have at least a cabinet or two down there that states, you know, the park is rented for this day, you know, and gives you information on who you want to contact as far as that goes. Because we have occasionally had some situations where people who have paid for and rented the park and then there are so many other people there, they haven't been able, you know, their event experience has not exactly been what we, what we had hoped. So we hope some of these things will help take care of that. And then we just kind of put together a special event planning guide that kind of just goes through everything here. And, you know, what you have to do if you want to close the street, what you'll have to do when you rent Cumberland Square Park. So it's just kind of like an informational. It gives some names for Virginia ABC if you're going to get the beer or beverage permit. And we kind of want to see this as an evolving document. You know, something that if we see something that needs a change, if we need something that's not working or we want to add something, that we can make that change to it pretty quickly. You know, and ordinance is very difficult and takes a lot of time, as everybody knows, to go through that process. So we're asking that City Council just approve the special event application that we have presented tonight.
All right. Thank you, Jay. We're looking for a motion?
I move for approval of the special events applications as presented.
Second?
All right. We have a motion and a second. I just have a few comments and questions. So is Cumberland Park, it's the only park that we charge anything for services, right? Out of all the parks we have in Bristol?
Right, because it's the only one we have that has, say, electricity available and water available. So that, and those are the types of things that those charges cover. Staff time to do any of those things.
Okay. I didn't realize we have so many parks. I mean, looking at this list.
We really do.
There's a ton of parks. And then also for special events, I know we don't charge for any type of special events. Is that a thought that eventually we may move towards that? Have we thought about that?
Well, you know, we have discussed it and I think the consensus right now was to not, but that doesn't mean that we aren't evaluating it as well. I know our neighbor across the street has begun charging. They have a fee schedule. And I don't know what kind of impact that's going to have on downtown special events because now if you have something that was supposed to take place on State Street and involve both cities, if they, if somebody doesn't want to do it because it's going to cost, that event's probably not going to happen or it's going to move completely over to the Virginia side. But I think the thought process was to kind of take a look at how it works out over there for a short period of time and then reevaluate that position. But, you know, that will be something that we'll have, we may have to discuss in the near future.
I'm just thinking about the staff time where we talk about, like with Cumberland Park, it requires the additional staff time and things. So I think sometimes special events or parades or events that are not really a Bristol community that, you know, others come in and do here, which are great, but then we don't charge anything and it probably requires more workers than the events at Cumberland Park.
Right. And you can, you know, Mr. Chandler over here, because of the Public Works guys do all the street closures and of course, Fire and Police, they're heavily involved when it comes to anything like that. And it's true that some of our special events probably do generate more as far as a tax revenue and hotel and everything like that. But that's a rare type of event. You know, it's, the smaller ones, so it, you know, it's something that we might have to look at.
Any other?
So just for procedural, we're going to vote on this tonight. It's approved. If we need to change it, same process, we just come back and?
Correct. And you see, there are a few fees when it involves Cumberland Square Park and we have some fencing that we can use that the city will set up. That fee, I know we are in the current, we are in the process of looking at that one. But with the special event season almost upon us, I wanted to go ahead and get this in front of you. So if we look at potentially doing a fee change, you might see it again here soon. So I just want to get it, get it going with, you know, being March, the event season is, will be kicking back up within the next month or two.
I think the application is great. I think it's smart to do that. And thank you to you and Debbie and the rest of the staff that put it together. I think it's fantastic. I think we probably needed to do that for a long time.
We have, I believe, yeah.
Thank you.
I like the idea of having an online forum where you can direct somebody to that. They don't necessarily have to come here during business hours to fill something out. And then you've got the brochure that you can hand somebody. They're interested in doing an event. Sure, here's the information about it. They just got all the contact information as well as the procedures.
Right. And our, we do have a staff member that's working on getting all of those online permit applications and everything going now. And this will just be one more thing to kind of add to the pile.
All right. Thank you. All right. With no further discussion, Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
All right. Moving into item number eight for year 26 budget workshop, personnel department requests and capital plan. And our city manager, I'll direct it to you.
Waiting on. But I guess before we get started, I have 142 slides. I've practiced several times this week. I think I've got it down to two hours and 42 minutes, so.
Lovely. Yeah.
We will get through this. I know we've been here a long time, so I don't want to belabor any of these points. First, I want to say thank you to all the department heads that have diligently gone through their budgets to present to myself and the assistant city manager what they believe they need in order to operate efficiently and to provide the services that our citizens expect. Last but not least, I want to thank Tamara Spradlin. This would not come together without her and her leadership in her role as Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. So I appreciate everything that she does to make this happen, especially this time of year because she is extremely busy wearing two hats this time of year. So without any further ado, we'll start here. We'll talk about our budget workshop schedule. Tonight is our first budget workshop. And then on March 25th, which is two weeks from tonight, we'll have another budget workshop, which will include a discussion of revenue. We will not be talking about the revenue tonight because it's something we're still putting together to make sure that we have the best numbers that we can as we conclude wrapping up the budget. On April the 8th, I plan on presenting the budget to council. And that same night, there will be a tax rate resolution where council will have to vote on what the tax rate will be for real estate taxes for calendar year 25. On April the 12th, we will advertise the fiscal year 26 budget in the paper and for a public hearing on April the 22nd for that appropriation ordinance. Then on May the 13th, we will have the first reading of the budget ordinance. And then on May 27th, we will have the second reading of the budget ordinance, which is also the adoption of the budget. So in this presentation tonight, we've talked about the schedule. We're going to talk about the process. I have council's budget goals in here as well. The citywide general obligation debt that the city owes for the various projects that the city has done over the numbers of years. We'll talk about infrastructure projects. And we'll talk about the capital improvement plan and the locally funded projects, fleet rotation, health insurance and full-time employee requests, and then department requests over $10,000. So just as a reminder, the budget workshop process, its purpose is for us to receive feedback during the budget development process and to communicate where we are at this point in time. The budget remains a working document throughout the process based on historical data, trends and projections. And we want to have a format for questions and comments. And public comment will be received at the regularly scheduled city council meetings for the public to make any comments they have about our budget. By law, under 15.2 hyphen 2503, the law states the governing body shall prepare and approve a budget for informative and fiscal planning purposes only, containing a complete itemized and classified plan of all contemplated expenditures and all estimated revenues and borrowings for the locality for the ensuing fiscal year. The itemized contemplated expenditures shall include any discretionary funds to be designated by individual members of the governing body and the specific uses and funding allocation plan for those funds by the individual member. So let's talk about council budget goals. I did not put any names with any of the budget goals and these are not put in any sort of rank form. This is just put together so that council can see what other council members' budget goals are and the public. One council goal is an economic development director. Next is raises for the fire department. Three is reduce the real estate tax. Four, reduce the personal property tax. Five, fund public safety departments to the previous fiscal year. Six, fund an additional firefighter position. Seven, maintain trees, medians, sidewalks, crosswalks and striping. Eight, implement a program to repair potholes and make other road improvements proactively. So next, let's talk about our citywide general obligation debt. Here, we see what our funded expenditures are, our actual debt service, the excess or shortfall that we have to meet that debt service, the 2023 bond issue, the committed reserve funds that would be used to pay any of the debt service, and then the funding needed for that fiscal year in order to make up the shortfall. So you can see in 2425, the actual debt service is 8.9 million, a shortfall of 2.2 million. We have capitalized interest from the 2023 bond issue of roughly $770,000. And we have committed reserve funds of roughly $1.4 million and no funding was needed for this year's debt service. For 2526, once again, the actual debt service is about $8.9 million. We are short $2.2 million. We do not have any capitalized interest to put towards the? any capitalized interest to put towards the debt service for this upcoming fiscal year. We will use $1.9 million in committed reserve funds to help cover that debt payment, which leaves us $313,652 short that we have to find in this year's budget to cover that. In '26 and '27, once again, the debt service is about $8.9 million, again, a $2.2 million shortfall, and the funding needed is $2.2 million. '27 and '28, an $8.3 million debt service payment, a shortfall of $1.5 million, and the funding needed is also $1.5 million. And finally, you can see in '28 and '29, the debt decreases a little bit to $7.5 million, a shortfall of $801,000, and the funding needed to cover that debt service is $801,000 as well. Finally, I don't want anyone to forget that in '27, '28, we have the general obligation bond anticipation note due of $30.7 million. That was the bond anticipation note that we did to fund the landfill projects that have been going on out at the landfill. Do they have any questions about the general obligation debt? Not yet. We may have to sell some of our parks that the mayor mentioned in order to cover some of this, so. Next is our infrastructure projects that we have planned for fiscal year '26. Here you will see federal funding, state funding, and local funding. Many of these projects are covered by state funding and just requires just a small amount of local funding for these projects. Street and drainage improvements, every year we put $75,000 in that line item to cover any street and drainage improvements. The Lee Highway Exit 5 Phase 1B with the off-ramps that you currently see going on right now at Exit 5, that is funded $3.28 million by the state with local funding a little over $20,000 for a project total of $3.3 million. The Lee Highway Shared Use Path from Overhill Road to Clover Lane is $289,000, funded entirely by the state. The Goodson Street Bridge Replacement, $1.2 million, completely funded by the state. Martin Luther King Bridge, $1.1 million, completely funded by the state, and the Oak Street Bridge of $1.9 million, which is also completely funded by the state. So we have a total of $7.986 million in infrastructure projects going on in fiscal year '26, and out of that $7.9 million, the city only has to pay $95,359. So fiscal year '27, once again, you see the $75,000 as a placeholder for street and drainage improvements that we always have in the budget. The Lee Highway Shared Use Path from Overhill to Clover will go into '27 as well. That's $289,000. The Goodson Street Bridge Replacement of $1.2 million, completely funded by the state. The Martin Luther King Bridge, $1.1 million, completely funded by the state, and then the Oak Street Bridge of $1.9 million, completely funded by the state. That's a project total of $4.67 million with local funding of only $75,000. Now, let's talk about our state maintenance funded projects, which are reported.
Randy, Mr. Reed, sorry. I had one quick question, if you'll go back one slide. Do we have any idea when the Piedmont Street Bridge, Box Colvert, VDOT plans?
I'll turn it over to Mr. Chandler. You're on.
You said Piedmont?
Yeah, Piedmont Street, where they had the open house a couple months ago.
I'd have to go back and look at what VDOT has sent. That project's way out in the future, probably like 2031, 2032.
Okay.
Something like that. They are still trying to figure out the best way to repair that bridge.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's a big project that, you know, we don't need to, I shouldn't say we don't need to concern ourselves with right now, but it's not at the front of our mind. VDOT still has a lot to do. We still have to work with U.S. Fish and Game in regards to the bats that are underneath Piedmont and come up with a solution for the home for the bats as we repair that, and then just determine what is the best type of bridge to put back. So state maintenance funded projects, this is from our state maintenance fund. These projects will be budgeted as funding is available for each year. And you can see here, these project lists go from '26 all the way through 2030. We have Public Works Aggregate Storage Facility, that's $119,000. Euclid Avenue Drainage Improvements, a little over $1 million. Osborne Street Drainage Improvements, $393,000. The Reservoir Street Drainage Improvements, $103,000. Metacrest Drive and Independence Drive Drainage Improvements, $586,000. Colony Circle Drainage Improvements, $236,000. Wagner Road Drainage Improvements of $60,000. Downtown Parking Improvements of $330,000. Those are all in fiscal year 2026. Going into 2027, you have the Public Works Signal Building of $800,000. Downtown Parking Improvements, once again, of $550,000, and then the Crockett Street Drainage, I'm sorry, the West End Salt Storage of $500,000. That's in 2027. Then in 2028, there was two projects, the Crockett Street Drainage Improvements, and then the Piedmont Fox Meadow Glenway Drainage Improvements. And then in 2029, you have Valley Drive and Green Hill Road Drainage Improvements of $687,000. Goodson Street and Williams Street of $360,000 in 2030, and then the Second Taylor Haddon Street Improvement of $1.1 million in 2030. Next, we'll talk about our capital improvement plan and locally funded projects. So here's our local funding plan going through 2030. In fiscal year '26, local capital of $763,000. In fiscal year '27, $1.3 million. In fiscal year '28, it jumps to $3.4 million, and I will get the why that jumps significantly here in just a moment. You can see that will also be 6% of our general fund budget. We want to stay right around the 3% mark, but due to a big project that's scheduled in 2028, that is going to jump significantly. In fiscal year '29, $1.8 million in local capital, and then in 2030, $1.7 million. Next, you have our local vehicle replacements. We budget $893,000 each of those years for local vehicles replacements. So you have a total of $1.6 million in fiscal year '26, $2.2 in fiscal year '27, $4.3 million in fiscal year '28, $2.7 million in fiscal year '29, and $2.5 million in fiscal year 2030. So the fiscal year '28 jumps simply because of the Gene Malcolm Stadium repairs. As you all know, we went through some repairs this past year for Gene Malcolm Stadium to make sure that the stadium was safe. And then in fiscal year '28, we plan on doing more significant repairs to Gene Malcolm Stadium to get it back up to the standards as it needs to be. And that's, at least in these dollars, I think about a $2.5 million project, but I have that number coming up here shortly. So here's our locally funded projects for our capital improvement plan. The first in 2026 is the Fire Station Alerting System. Last year, we removed this project and pushed it to 2026, and that was so we did not have to raise the mills taxes. Plus, we asked for police vehicles that were going to be funded by a grant from congressionally directed spending. As of today, we do not know if we will get that congressionally directed spending, and we still don't, still do not have those police vehicles. Next, the interview room for the recording equipment installation. It's a $14,000 project. That's for the police department. That is something they need in order to interview subjects in regards to crimes that are committed in the city of Bristol. Also courthouse entry doors to make those handicapped accessible, $20,000. A mobile data terminal refresh for the police department and fire department of $385,000. Gas mask and filters for the police department of $44,000. And then you will see in our locally funded projects, firefighter personal protective equipment, that'll be funded every year at $50,000, so that they can get, keep their equipment up to date as far as the clothing that they wear when they have to fight a fire. In 2027, we will have an aerial ladder truck for $260,000. That is a lease that we will have for approximately 10 years for an aerial ladder truck, and that's what we do now with our ladder trucks or any of our fire trucks. We lease those trucks. Then $50,000 for the repeater system for our radio system, and then in 2027, a radio system upgrade of roughly $1 million. And then once again, $50,000 for the firefighter personal protective equipment for a total of $1.36 million. In 2028, once again, you can see the aerial ladder truck payment in there. $350,000 for the maintenance facility, and then here's the Gene Malcolm Stadium repair of $2.75 million. Once again, that's in 2025. You know, I would expect that number to probably increase by the time we get to 2028. And then $50,000 for the personal protective equipment for firefighters. 2029, once again, the aerial ladder truck of $260,000. Cumberland Square Park fencing, $110,000. That would be for fencing around the entire park. However, we are looking at different opportunities to get that paid for through grants prior to 2029. Sugar Hollow fencing of $124,872. That's for the ballparks, to put up new fencing at the ballparks at Sugar Hollow. Tipping floor repairs of $361,000. That is at the landfill facility where it used to be the tipping floor. There are some repairs that need to be made there. In 2029, demolition of jail and office reconfiguration. We are thinking $967,000 for that demolition. However, Ms. Spradlin is working with a group that may be able to put together a plan and potential funding sources for that to occur sooner rather than later. And then once again, the firefighter personal protective equipment of $50,000. And then in 2030, the aerial ladder truck of $260,000. We need to renovate the pool area at Waldo Mile. We think $80,000 should be a good number for that renovation. Starlink City Network Satellite redundancy, that would allow us to have internet access in the event things happen. That would take out our land-based internet system of $72,000. Cumberland Square Park Stage Reconstruction of $250,000. Randolph Field Field House, $165,000 for upgrades there. The Randolph Field Third Base Bleachers and Locker Rooms, an $825,000 project. And finally, the firefighter personal protective equipment as well. Now, what did not make it into our locally funded projects? There was a tub grinder request. The tub grinder would have been used to grind brush, and that's a $1.1 million purchase. That did not make it into the request. Belling Room Improvements, that's at the belling room at the tipping floor at the landfill of $875,000. The Martin Luther King Boulevard and Cumberland Street Parking Lot, $880,000. Patrol vehicles of $400,000. Gravel Lot Storage Building and Parking Lot Surfacing, that's right across the street, of $250,000. And courthouse lobby benches of $10,000. I should have went over this before, but we started a capital improvement committee sometime back in the fall, I believe. Ms. Spradlin headed up the capital improvement committee, and we met several times. We went through these projects. We ranked these projects based on, is it, is it an urgent need based on the fact that it's breaking state or federal law or local law? And we had several different criteria, and we scored each one of those, and that's how we ranked these projects. So we went through a fairly lengthy process to make sure we ranked these projects appropriately and get them funded appropriately. Next, fleet rotation. Police vehicles. This year, we will purchase eight police vehicles, roughly $600,000. And then we will have an ambulance for $325,000. This will be the first ambulance we've purchased in a number of years, so this, it's an upgrade for that. The sheriff's office is requesting two vehicles for $130,000. The fleet cars that we use just every day in the city for employees to do their job, replacement of $55,000. Collections, a dump, a dump truck with a lift gate of $75,000. A brush truck of $250,000. A disposal truck of $56,000. A disposal mini excavator of $90,000, and a Parks and Rec operations truck of $62,000 for $1.6 million this upcoming year. Next, health insurance. As you all may or may not be aware, health insurance premiums continue to increase, and we were no exception to the rule this year. We received a 10.2% increase in our health insurance premiums, and how is that going to impact the city moving forward? The employer share, the city of Bristol's share, will increase by 12%, and the employee share will increase by 4%. So it's going to be an estimated budget increase for the city of roughly $360,000 with the health insurance premiums increasing. Currently, 80% of our employees are on a city plan. When you add the library and DSS in there, 82% of all employees are on a city plan. We have four plans that are offered: the Key Advantage 500 Comprehensive Plan, the Key Advantage 500 Preventative Plan, I'm sorry, the Key Advantage 500 Comprehensive, 47% of our employees that have our health insurance are on that plan. The Key Advantage 500 Preventative Plan, 3% of our employees. The Key Advantage 1000 Comprehensive, 45% of our employees are on that plan. And then the Key Advantage 1000 Preventative, 6% of our employees are on that plan. 55% of our employees have a single plan, which just means they are on the health insurance. 18% of our employees are on the dual plan, which means employee plus one, and then 27% of our employees are on the family plan. So how did this impact the employee average cost for health insurance? If you're on the single plan, on the average, your premium would decrease by 1%. The single plus one plan, there is no change in the premium there, and then the family plan was an increase of 12%. So overall, the city cost for our health insurance for one, for employee ranges anywhere from $9,108 all the way up to $19,668 per year. So our goal was to cover 90% of the Key Advantage 1000 single and 75% of the 1000 dual and family. And then we're hoping that employees over time will choose the Key Advantage 1000 plan, because that is a little less cost to the city than the Key Advantage 500 plan. Any questions about health insurance? All right, next is full-time employee requests from across the city. I will tell you that it is not a small number of full-time employee increase requests across the city. It impacts just about every single department that we have. As you all know, we operate on a very slim crew most of the time, and many people doing different types of jobs just to cover the basics that the citizens expect from us. So first, let's talk about a salary increase. The state of Virginia is including a 3% salary increase across, for statewide employees. If we do the same, that's a $605,000 cost to the city. Next, the request going forward. The city manager's office has requested a part-time Department of Government Efficiency Specialist position. I think you will already see some of the benefit to that. We have that as a temporary role right now. We have a employee who is going out searching for problems on the front end, so that hopefully we can get to the problem before citizens have to make the phone call to us. That includes the potholes that Mr. Osborne was concerned about. It includes brush on the side of the road. It includes litter, houses that need to be addressed for whatever purpose. So I think that is a big help. We are using a team spreadsheet and working across multiple departments to make sure those issues get addressed. Finance is requesting an account clerk for payroll and benefits. This is a, we have two people in the city who can run payroll, and if something happens to either one of those, that puts us behind, and it's a very important position, just so that employees can get paid. The Circuit Court Judge is asking for a law clerk. The Circuit Court Judge is asking for a law clerk. Circuit Court Clerk is going to have a state-funded deputy clerk position. The Police Department is asking for a captain position. And also, two part-time positions would be replaced by one full-time officer. The Fire Chief is asking for an assistant fire chief and seven firefighters. Public Works is asking for a GIS analyst, a construction inspector, eight partially state-funded MEO-1s, two partially state-funded MEO-2s, an engineering intern, two mechanics, three custodians, and one building maintenance MEO-1. And Clear Creek Golf Course is asking for an assistant pro. We have talked in the past about succession planning in the city. I've had that discussion with all department heads over the past year. I think we've touched on that a little bit. It's important that we plan as a city to make sure we have people who can step in the roles in the event someone is out for an extended period of time or decides to leave the city. So, a lot of these positions here would help with that. Any questions in regards to salary increases and full-time employee requests? All right. So, next, we're going to go to department requests of over $10,000. So, the City Manager Department, an increase of $12,000. And that is due to the cost of software for citywide items that we currently use. IT is asking for an increase of $71,000 at a software for Public Works. It's also a software for FOIA. And it's also a software to archive any social media things that we put out on social media. Also, IT is asking for an $18,000 increase for computer workstations and hardware citywide. The 28th Judicial Circuit Court is asking for a $100,000 increase for courthouse and Circuit Court update refresh. That is a number that Ms. Bradlin and I have talked about. The court did not specifically ask for $100,000. They gave us a list of items that need to be addressed at the courthouse. And we think $100,000 would be a start. And by no means is that $100,000 going to fix everything that needs to be fixed at the courthouse. The Southwest Regional Jail Authority, we have an increase of $1.69 million for housing inmates this year. We roughly have 240 to 250 inmates in the regional jail at any given time. When we went into the regional jail, we had anywhere between 180 and 200 inmates. And the number of inmates has just increased over the past several years. The Appalachian Juvenile Commission, an increase of $141,000. The Streets and Engineering Division for Maintenance of Building and Property, that is for paving ineligible streets, an increase of $110,000. Streets and Engineering, this is for food and food service supplies. This is when we have staff out plowing snow and doing other things that aren't necessarily during your normal work hours. Line item of $20,000 to cover food and supplies for that. The Streets and Engineering has asked for $50,000 increase to cover the second half of the ADA Transition Plan, the Resilience Plan Development Match, and GPS equipment for GIS. And then, also for stormwater management, an increase of $39,400. And that's the maintenance cost of non-eligible stormwater drains throughout the city. We're not done yet. Fleet, contract labor, $80,000. But this can be reduced if there are two mechanics that are hired. You saw my previous request. Fleet has asked for two mechanics. So, if we did hire two mechanics, we could reduce its contract labor costs. Refuge Collection, contract labor, increase of $15,000. That's just additional money needed for training people as we bring contract labor in to help with collections. Refuge Collections of $15,000. That's an increase, what it costs to have GFL take our cardboard and trash and have that recycled. That's a cost to the city. Refuge Collection, again, repair parts and equipment, an increase of $45,000. And that's just what the increased cost for repair items are costing us right now. The Solid Waste Department for Maintenance of Machinery and Equipment, a $25,000 increase. Once again, it's just the increased cost for maintenance items that we're seeing across the board. Solid Waste, again, an increase of $1.2 million. And that's the estimate for SCS field services to work for an entire year at the landfill. They are doing a good job taking care of the things at the landfill that our staff has not been able to do simply because of the specialized training that's needed for the things that they are doing. Solid Waste Disposal, lease of equipment. This is for necessary items of a dozer, a pump excavator. And that's all for the quarry landfill, an increase of $67,000. Maintenance on municipal buildings, contract labor, increase of $47,000. This can be reduced if three full-time employee custodians are added. Maintenance on municipal buildings, increase of $55,000. And that's just for building needs and to upkeep our buildings as our buildings continue to age. Maintenance on municipal buildings, again, for maintenance of machinery and equipment. And that's $15,000. The Police Department has a boiler issue. And then, here at City Hall, we have a water conditioning issue here at City Hall and also at PD. Next, the Health Department. There's a $26,500 increase for the Health Department this year. Highlands Community Services, an increase of $27,339. Department of Social Services asked for an increase of $234,000. That's just from the local funding piece. Highlands CPMT, increase of $55,548. Parks and Rec Operations, that's contract labor for $32,000. And that's for seasonal employees. Parks and Rec Operations, Maintenance of Building and Property, $115,000. That's to repave the parking lot at Sugar Hollow. Economic Development, the White Site. As you all know, we have an opportunity based on language of the contract and the deed that we can purchase the White Site back. So, that would be $150,000 if we decided to go that route. Economic Development Activities, this would include new downtown lights, money for Christmas Festival and signage at the Falls Development that the city is responsible for. And that's an increase of $35,000. Economic Development Activities, dues and memberships and subscriptions, $14,000 increase. And that is for a software program for economic development that is based on how we calculate who is going where and how many people are going to a certain destination at a certain time. Code Compliance, this is for mowing and demolition. It's an $80,000 increase from what we have put in there previously. As you all know, there are quite a few structures in the city that need to be addressed. And it's costing anywhere between $10,000 and $15,000 now to tear down one home, probably more than that for most of the homes. So, an $80,000 increase to a budget line item, $100,000 does not get you far when you're tearing down and demolishing homes. We also have contracted with several local mowing companies to mow yards that are, have not been mowed. And then, we put a tax lien on properties when we have to do that. We're currently working with Chief Ashbrook. And we'll be working with the sheriff on the way to figure out how we can get inmates to potentially cover some of these issues for us going forward. And then, a contingency fund, a $50,000 increase in the city contingency fund. So, that's all the department requests of over $10,000. And so, what's next? Any questions you all have? Feel free to ask those now. And if I know the answer, I'll try to answer it. If I don't, we'll get you a timely response. And we'll continue through the budget work.
Do you have the total staff proposed or requested staff increases?
You mean for?
Total number and total estimated cost?
I do not have the total estimated cost, but the total staff increase would be 33.
Well, thank you for that presentation.
You're welcome.
That was a lot to take in. And I think we'll probably all have some questions. I don't know if we have them tonight, but that we would like to ask you. Does anybody want to ask anything tonight?
Do you have the total of the department request increase?
Not at this time, no.
All right. Well, thank you for that presentation. All right. Moving into item E. Ordinances, First Reading. Ordinance 25 hyphen 1, First Reading prohibiting the use of certain vehicles and devices on certified, specified sidewalks within the city. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report, Randy.
Counsel, give me just a second. So, counsel, before you, I've had numerous conversations with our downtown police officers and some business owners in regards to issues they are seeing downtown as it specifically relates to bicycles and skateboards. We have a number of people who are using the sidewalks and using bicycles in a careless manner. And based upon state code, the city has the ability to restrict bicycles and other types of mobility devices on certain streets and sidewalks. And this ordinance would allow us to restrict the use of those types of vehicles and devices on State Street, Lee Street sidewalks, and Moore Street sidewalks. So, based on the conversations we've had, you know, I respectfully ask counsel to approve this ordinance so that we can start moving forward with some enforcement issues.
All right. Thank you. So, looking for a motion and second for the first reading of the ordinance?
I move for a first reading of the ordinance as presented.
By caption only.
My caption only.
All right. Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Counsel, discussion. I'll just say, I've heard some of these same comments too, especially from downtown about bicycles or things coming through there really fast and people on the sidewalks and the sidewalks are not very wide. So, I would be in support of this. I think it's a safety issue as much as anything.
I would agree. And I appreciate, I see that there's a piece in there about if someone's under the age of 12 accompanied by an adult would not apply. I know there are some issues where maybe a child's on a bike with a parent walking or something and just, that's a safety issue too. So, I appreciate that carve out there.
I've mostly heard the comments concerning electric scooters. One person was asking me if this is basically unnecessary because we're trying to regulate stuff that doesn't need to be regulated because it's already, it's already against the law to run somebody off the sidewalk. Problem is, what I was thinking is, this gives us another enforcement mechanism. If somebody's run off the sidewalk, you'd have to have a police officer there observing it at the time in order to cite them. This way, if they're on the sidewalk, they're already in violation. And the fines, the same either way. It seems like this would be a lot easier to enforce to cover the same problem.
It just gives our officers another tool.
Any other discussion? All right. With no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Knave.
Yes.
All right. Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance number 25 hyphen 1, an ordinance of the city of Bristol, Virginia prohibiting the use of certain vehicles and devices on specified sidewalks within the city.
All right. Thank you. Moving into E2, ordinance 25 hyphen 2, First Reading, Updating Section 50 hyphen 136, Agricultural Uses on Residential Property. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report, June.
Hi. So, this is the same issue we brought up for the joint public hearing at the last council meeting. I won't belabor the point as the facts are the same. We've had a number of violations regarding this ordinance due to the property line requirements that were in the code from the previous draft of this ordinance. Since our last meeting, we made two updates. One to correct a minor typo and one to adjust the permit fee from $100 to $50, like was suggested by counsel. So, there's the offending line that really drew all of our attention as to what was causing a lot of these violations. The 100 feet being a very difficult bar to meet for basically every property in the city. This being an instance of a violation where it wasn't physically possible for this property to have chickens, but they had them regardless. It was brought to our attention due to a rooster being on the property that has since gone. With the new ordinance, this group of chickens that was otherwise not a nuisance to the neighborhood would be a compliant use. Similarly, this is the same situation on Glenway where, again, a rooster brought the situation to our attention, but the rooster's gone. And the chickens would be in compliance with the new ordinance with additional screening. Again, the offending ordinance or the offending part that got the violations. And then, this is the new update. You can see, again, the permit being set at $50 and the adjustment of removing that unnecessary word in Section 2B. So, if you have any questions about the ordinance, that is the general situation. But staff recommends approval of the ordinance as written.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. Looking for a motion and second for first reading of the ordinance, full or by caption.
I move for first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Counsel, discussion.
Thank you, June, for, thank you for your hard work on this. I know that, you know, we put this at the end because this is what we were all building up to and we were all anticipating getting to talk about the chickens. So, we appreciate we saved the best for last. But in all seriousness, I think this is very good. I think this is common sense. I think this will allow people, you know, especially in the state of the economy today with eggs are going to go up, things are going to continue to go up with inflation and they're only going to get more expensive. So, you know, this is just a thing that will allow people to be able to maybe provide some of their own food. Or as some citizens talked about at our last meeting, this will just be a nice thing for people if they want to have chickens. And we make it a little bit easier and maybe get rid of some of the unnecessary regulations.
Absolutely.
We appreciate your work.
Sometimes when we get into philosophical discussions, one of the topics is that what is the purpose of local government? A lot of that is to protect local residents while at the same time not being overly burdensome. And this is an improvement that helps us achieve the intended purpose while achieving the intended purpose.
Thank you. All right. No further questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Knave.
Yes.
All right. Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 25 dash 2, Title, Update to Chapter 50, Land Use, Article 2, Zoning, Division 11, Section 50 dash 136, Agricultural Uses on Residential Property.
All right. Thank you. All right. Matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. And we have one signed up, Mr. Lee Jones. And thank you for your patience tonight. I know you've been sitting there a long time, four hours almost. So, thank you for your patience and for being here tonight.
It has been a long evening for all of us.
Yes.
I appreciate you letting me talk. And I thought, well, I would leave, but I've been here too long. I'm not leaving. I'm going to say what I came to say. From my understanding, in the state of Virginia, the government has put upon the assessors to bring all property in the state of Virginia up to current value 100%. And there's other states that are doing the same thing. In 2020, I was basically knocked on my backside and some of you may have too with a huge property increase. Well, I have two properties. One was at a 49% increase and the other was about 45% increase, which is a lot. increase, which is a lot. Okay, we just had another assessment. Well, I don't need to tell you because it probably happened to you all as well. I got knocked on my rear end again. I got a property that went up a hundred thousand dollars and another property that again went up eighty thousand dollars in conjunction with the ones in two thousand and twenty. That's a lot of money to me. But I feel kind of ridiculous standing here saying that. I feel like a small fish in a big pond after hearing Mr. Reed talk about the city budget. How in the world the city pays for all that stuff? I have no idea. But I will say this, he did mention about looking at our property tax going down, and the personal property tax I don't care too much about, but it's the assessments that we have received that it's like the state wants the people that are on fixed income, which is me, to not be able to live in their house anymore because you can't afford to pay the taxes. Now, I never thought that would happen in Bristol. I've lived here all my life, and my dad lived here all his life. And I like it here, and I'd like to stay here. I'd like to stay in my house. But I may be asking Mr. Dietrich for that part-time driving job that he mentioned so I can have an income to help pay my property taxes. But what I'm here to ask or to state, the casino should be online now for a full assessment for whatever that building is, forty million dollars, whatever it is. So we ought to be getting a good chunk of money for that. Plus, I heard a lot of good things at the beginning about how much money's coming in for hotel motel, food tax, venue tax, and all that. And it all sounds really good. There's downtown stuff coming in, there's stuff coming in from the Hard Rock. So I'm really, really looking for what I was told five years ago or whenever it was that the casino would help us with our taxes, our property taxes in specific. And I feel like four years ago, we were kind of hoodooed over that, but I'm a little bit more informed this year. So this is just my first bug in your ear that I'm really looking forward to have, you know, if you've got to have a tax increase, that's fine. But I'm not looking for, you know, a huge amount of taxes. I've talked about for anybody in Bristol. I can only speak for myself, but I'm speaking for everybody here that, you know, I'm retired and I've only got so much money to go around, and I certainly don't want to dig out any of my investments to sell to have to pay my taxes to be able to live here. And that's, that's just how I feel about it. So I'm really hoping that something can be done to lower our tax rate to where it's, you know, even though we've received a humongous increase, basically. I mean, I'm up close to three hundred thousand dollars now, which I never thought I'd ever see in my lifetime. So some of you all may be there as well, but I've talked to a lot of people and a group of friends that I have, and I've got a pretty good indication that they all received a pretty decent assessment increase again this time. And I know the city has to have money to run on, but we also have to be able to live in our homes and pay our taxes.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Looking for a motion and second.
I move for approval of the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Knave.
Yes. And looking for a motion and second for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Knave.
Yes. And we are adjourned.